For the City Council Public Haring will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Here.
Stephen Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lalebi LeBeau?
Long?
Yep.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pavaris?
President Ponti? Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. First, this public hearing is given in accordance with provisions of Section 6-4A of the City Charter that a public hearing be held with the Forest City Council, today's date, June 18, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers, to hear all persons interested and wishing to be heard on the fiscal year 2020 municipal budget. This proposed operating budget is available for inspection at the Forest Public Library, the main branch, the office of the city clerk, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., or the city website at forestma.org. At this time, I'm going to be calling any proponents wishing to speak on this item, calling all proponents.
Motion to open?
I apologize, thank you. Motion to open the hearings made by Counselor Kilby, thank you, seconded by Counselor Long, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there anybody here who is a proponent wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents?
Okay.
No? Calling all opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
A public hearing has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That's all before us at this point.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Forest City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Here.
Stephen Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lalebi LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Yep.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pavaris?
Yeah.
President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. First item on our agenda is citizen's input. One person has signed up to speak, Kathleen Patelow of 102 South Main Street regarding Old Second Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Welcome.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. In front of you, I'd like to bring up Old Second Street. There's no lighting back there, it's very, very dark, and there's some, I don't want to put it, I want to put it in a nice way, drug uses, sleeping back there and living back there, basically. There's vehicles parked back there, it's just a mess, and they're fixing it very, very, very nice back there, and they're using it as a toilet back there, it's crazy. So I just thought I'd bring it to your attention tonight, that something needs to be addressed to take care of that matter, like, a lot of lighting, so they won't sleep back there, they like the darkness, they can't be seen, you know?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselors C3, Counselor Camara?
Mr. President and members of the council, Ms. Patelow brought this to my attention, but prior to that, there had been a phone call that generated for me a resolution which I've submitted for the council meeting on Thursday, which calls on the Public Safety Committee to address this issue, and I had wondered whether it should be a Public Works and Transportation or a Public Safety meeting, but I opted to go the route of Public Safety because, very unfortunately, because of this space, I'm sure everyone knows what we're talking about, Old Second Street, it was actually called Lu7 Promenade at one time, but on the west side of the Academy Building is in process of being converted into a very nice, pleasant space, but in the meantime, there were benches that have been left there that are no longer usable, except for people to sleep on.
They're using them for beds, no.
Yeah, at all hours of the day and night. Drug use is becoming very prevalent, so I would ask that, in addition to our dealing with this on Thursday, that we sent to the police chief a request that he immediately enter the park board as well, because the park board has jurisdiction, that they do an immediate sweep of removing all items there that are soon to be disposed of, old benches, et cetera, and remove them from there, maybe they can reuse them in some other location, but right now, it's become a hazard, and the lights that used to be there have been taken down, so it's now a darkened area, and this is our center city, this is our downtown, so we try to invest, we, as a council, establish a downtown renewal plan, because we want to see some revitalization downtown, and in the meantime, we have this disastrous situation. Soon, Lizzie Borden will be attracting many people to the Lizzie Borden House, as it does every August, so I hope that we can put a rapid response to getting this area cleaned up. So would it be appropriate to ask that a letter be sent now, or do we need to do that? We don't have any full council meeting until Thursday.
Thursday.
But could we ask you, Mr. President, as council president, to send a letter, as the president, to the chief, and to the park board, that they address this public safety situation?
Madam Clerk, if you could prepare a letter on behalf of Counselor in Seat 3's request, I'd be happy to sign that and get that over to the police chief, and that we can shine additional light on this at our full council meeting on Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Patelow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That will conclude citizen's input for our agenda this evening. We're going to begin our discussion on the municipal budget. I'd like to bring to attention to the council kind of what we did last year as a reminder, it's worked in the past, and we're going to continue to do this. Today, before us, we're going to have, the school department is here before us tonight, school department will be able to answer questions specifically to the school department's budget. After they are completed, we are going to jump to administrative services and general government. That will be where we will probably end it tonight, there's a number of departments that fall under administrative services, as well as general government, those respective department heads are here, but before I entertain the schools, I'd like to ask if anybody has questions for the Elections Department at this time, can you please let me know? Because it's just proper that we do that at this time. Does anybody have questions for the Elections Department at this time? Hearing none, so that would be good, thank you very much. So she can go. All right, so at this time, Mr. Superintendent, your administrative team, welcome to come to the table. Anybody on the school department is here, you're happy to come. I'd like to acknowledge Mark Costa, Vice Chair of the School Committee, School Committee Man Coogan, School Committee Man Corey, as well as School Committee Man Martin is here with us tonight, welcome to the council chambers. I know I have a number of them, so I'm going to be taking the floor, but, yeah, you're right. Madam Vice President? Mr. Superintendent, if you'd like to give a brief overview of your budget to the City Council, that'd be great.
We began the FY '20 budget process this fall, and that process begins with us working collaboratively both within the executive leadership team of the system and with the school committee to establish a set of goals. Those goals are our budget priorities. From there, we then work with all of our principals to begin developing the principals and department heads, there are zero-based budgets, each year, we use a zero-based model. It gets easier and easier each year because the numbers are a reflection of the zero base from the prior year. We then meet with each of the principals and each of the department heads for the orgs that they run, and they're each given a forum, myself and--
Excuse me, Mr. Superintendent, I hate to interrupt you, but as I'm here, hearing you speak, I'm seeing a number of school committee people at our table, we have to be cognizant of open meeting law violations, so one of your school committee members should actually leave the table at this point, just so we're clear. Thank you very much, Mr. Corey, I'd like to again acknowledge that he's here tonight. Mr. Superintendent, you can continue.
All right, I'm sorry, thank you. So those meetings are where we really get into the weeds and the minutia around every single position, rectifying the needs, principals and department heads, then articulate what they see as needs for the coming year, we do staffing, we assign staffing based on metrics that we use around a certain number of second language students, certain number of special education students, and so on and so forth, special programs. We then begin the format, looking at the budget priorities, what is it that we're going to put forward in what we call the superintendent's proposed budget? We then work on that budget, and we come forward to the school committee and present that budget. The school committee then works and deliberates for a few months, both in subcommittee, which Vice Chair Costa runs, and the full committee. At that point, the committee comes to a decision on approving a final budget. We've done that, we've submitted that through the mayor to the city council, both the operating budget and the transportation budget. The budget that I proposed this year, and this is my third year doing this, and each year, we've taken the same path forward, I propose, I look at the governor's numbers, and I look at net school spending, and I propose a budget based on the governor's numbers, not at 100%, but 101% of net school spending, because I figure it's very important that we're above the minimum foundation to fund schools. So this year, the governor's number is approximately $159,071,986. That's an increase of last year's budget of 9.7 million. You say, wow, that's a large increase in one year. Well, it is, but it's also this year, there was some, House and the Senate enacted some of the recommendations in the Foundation Budget Review Commission, and therefore, because we've tripled the number of second language learners, because we're at about 78 to 82% poverty on any given day, our foundation budget increases, and therefore, 100% of net school spending, the minimum amount, is that governor's 151. However, I asked for 101%, the delta's about 1.59 million, so the total that I requested, the FY '20 budget that I proposed to the school committee is $160,662,706 million, and that represents 101% of net school spending. In doing that, we looked at, of course, cost containment, looking at human capital conversions, strategic reductions, student-driven needs, and of course, the zero base that we talked about. I presented that to the school committee, that's the figure that they voted to approve. The way that breaks down in terms that we use here in the council of Fall River, our operating budget request is $106,642,648, and the transportation request originally was the $11.95 million, that we can talk about a little bit, that was rescinded at the last meeting, as we've gone out on a new bid, and I know we'll want to talk about that. As I talked about the process, very clear that this budget that we proposed this year really takes in to account a lot of the considerations from this august body conversations last year around preventative maintenance, around technology we preserved for the school committee, the class size reduction positions, and other smart budgeting strategies that we've used. We also, this year, based on FY '19 budget, we've already received $2.6 million in one-time monies given back to us because of health insurance did not come in anywhere close to what we've budgeted, and there was a change in the formula for charter school assessment, that's gone down. You add those two together, we received about $2.6 million, and I'm anticipating by the end-of-year report, which gets ratified, and, not ratified, but gets approved by the Department of Ed sometime this fall, it's looking like there may be another $900,000 that will be under 100% of net school spending, which will be coming over to us as one-time funds. You guys all know that one-time funds aren't a good way to manage a budget, because it's not real in terms of, it's real dollars, but it's not real in terms of how we think strategically about the long-term strategy. So for us, coming in tonight with this request at 101%, it's critical for us to meet the needs of the students that we have in the system. I will say, and I'll finish, I know you've got a lot of questions, Kevin Almeida, has really done a great job of really building an outstanding budget, I appreciate the teamwork displayed on the city side with Mary and Kathy, have been very helpful working with all of us through this process. Ken Pacheco has also been outstanding, but most importantly, the leadership of the school committee, to ensure that every dollar that we have is value-added into the classroom to support our students. This year's budget, a couple of the highlights, we have, there are 70 new positions in the proposed budget. Of those, many of which are paraprofessionals needed both for special education, and also I added some classroom prayers, plus some leadership positions in Saks across the district. We also were able to convert several positions from, you know, for example, if I had a third grade at one school, but the second grade numbers are down, I could convert that position to another first grade, which would cost neutral savings, which we were able to do in this budget, and then, most importantly, the cost containment, maybe you don't know, but the federal grants keep getting reduced, oh, you do know, because on the city side, that happens as well with Chapter 90, but the federal grants that come into the state have been reduced pretty much every year for the last, probably, 10 years, and those federal grants fund a lot of positions, so what I've been doing each year over the last two years is taking some of our positions off our federal grants and building them into operating budget, because if we're being honest, which we try to be every single day, we know that those funds are going to dissipate over the next several years, and we don't want a funding cliff, so if I can build those into the operating budget, knowing that we're growing our foundation, we'll be able to maintain the same level of services moving forward. So we have several of those as well. We also have expense changes in our line items to include some new additional line items around contingency, professional development, alternative ed, using, I believe the idea came from the school committee this past year, was around using retirees to help us do student interventions one-on-one, and small group work as a new line item. Transportation, of course, is not net school spending eligible, but adaptive technology is, and that's a new line item that we've added as well. So we're really thinking, as I get a good, you know, this is my third year, this is my third budget presentation, I think we're really getting a good handle of areas where we see needs for further investment than areas where we're able to maintain and provide services. So with that, I'm hopeful that the House and the Senate, now, let me just be clear, so we've requested a budget again of 160 million, which is 101% of the governor's number. The governor's number is low, the House came in about $500,000 higher than the governor's number, but the Senate came in at about $2.7 million higher. So right now, they're having that conciliation conference committee going back and forth, and being that we've done this before, I'm assuming the answer's going to be somewhere in the middle. So if we come in at 100% of net school spending, which is what the mayor has articulated, I'll be able to close the gap, which right now is a gap of about $1.7 million between what the school committee approved and what's been allocated, because again, the mayor's budget's built off the governor's numbers, at 100%.
Counselor in Seat 5?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, all right. I've got a couple of questions, and thank you, Mr. Superintendent, members of the school committee and the finance team, thank you, and kudos to your school committee for working collectively to get you where you are at this point. A couple of quick questions that I have that should probably be pretty easily answered. One thing that, in my mind, looking at this budget, I'm going to just jump right into it, under each position within this school department, so let's just say I take Durfee, for instance.
Yes.
And in the Durfee under positions, they'll have an individual's name, they'll have their position, they'll have their amount for salaries, so if I say Principal A at whatever school it is, is under this budget that's presented to this council before us right now, shows an amount of $87,000. However, that individual, looking at this, or having conversations with them, isn't actually making the amount that is in the budget--
Right.
--assigned to it.
So we use a zero-based budget model, so that we use an average FTE salary, so all administrators average out to $87,000, and all teachers average out to $64,000.
Yeah, no, and they get that.
So that gives us the bottom line at the end, which rolls into the actual salaries.
If I may, Mr. Superintendent, how is that zero-based budgeting, if you are averaging out salaries for administrators and teachers?
So you also have the actuals--
No, I don't.
--in your binder.
We've got to go to the front? Okay. So, why, I'm just curious, more organization than anything, because now I'm confused, why would you have each school in your budget presented to either the school committee or the city council, that you have a position, you have a name, and you have an amount, but then you've got to go to another part of the budget to find out what they're actually making?
Right, because when you use a zero-based system, it's based on FTE averages, because it would be, you could not do a zero-based system if you did it on actuals, because different people cost different things, and then people would be picking, because you start from zero, less expensive positions over the actual positions.
See, my understanding of zero-based budgeting, which has been educated to me from this city's finance team, is they zero-base budget for the exact amounts for salaries.
Yeah.
They don't take averages.
We always use averages.
So you're not actually zero-base budgeting your budget salaries?
Well, you are, you're zero-basing on your average salaries.
But you're not doing the actuals, is my question.
Because we're not in the business of cutting individuals based on salaries.
But you wouldn't miss, and nobody's saying you're cutting individuals--
You would, because it doesn't equal the same, it gives too much discretion on, I'd rather have a cheaper position than the most expensive position. Sometimes you have teachers that cost, you know, upwards of, what's the highest then? 75 to 80, and, you know, if you give principals and their teams discretion, say, oh, I don't want this position anymore, but that's the position we have.
Yeah, but, Mr. Superintendent, I'm extremely confused as to why, I understand you're speaking on zero-based budgeting, right? But I don't understand why you couldn't just do what the city does, is if you have a department head, or you have a school teacher, or you have a principal that's set to make a specific amount, that you wouldn't just put in the budget for that individual what that actual amount is? I don't understand.
You actually have the salaries in your budget.
I do have the salaries, but unless you can indicate what page it is, I'm looking at a specific school, I just opened Durfee up.
He's going to tell you right now.
I'm not going to go through your budget and ask you what position, what person's making. All I want to know is a better understanding, I understand you have a number for salaries, right? I get that, but I don't understand why, what's before us here, if I just take one specific page, it says, "Vice Principal, Durfee High School, 87," and every single person in leadership at Durfee High School is making 87, and then you keep going down, and every single teacher is making 64.
Great question. So prior to me coming here three years ago--
Yep.
--that line item equaled the total number to fund Durfee, give me the bottom line on that, in front of you.
The bottom line for, you're looking at $15 million.
All right, so Durfee costs $15 million to run. Zero-basing Durfee is taking that same $15 million and then saying to the principal, now build your school with that $15 million, but you do it not through picking and choosing which teachers I want, because one costs 75 and one costs 36, use an average FTE, that totals up to the exact same cost as the operating budget.
Okay.
So they take the $15 million, and they build up to $15 million, they can't go over their total actual cost, does that make sense?
It makes sense, but I don't understand why you do it this way. I don't understand why you couldn't present a budget to your school committee--
Let me, yeah.
--right? And the city council that say the actual amount. Why would you, why would you use an F--
We give you two forms, so we give you the actuals, and then we give you our zero-based documents.
Mr. Almeida, where exactly in this big pile does it say where Durfee High School's actual people are getting paid?
It's in the FY '20 budget summary, and it is behind the, it's behind the proposed budget, where you have summary for all the accounts, you have all the amounts, and then you've got the individual folks right behind it, I believe, I know they're not numbered, but I believe it's 42 pages of salary details.
Okay.
Just a point of information, what tab are you referring to?
It's the first tab, FY '20 budget summary tab.
All right, so you broke it down in another part of your budget, that breaks down the organization or the type of position, the FY '15, '16, expended to date, FY '17, '18, '19, and your requested '20 budget. So pretty much what you do, and again, I'm not on the school committee, so I don't-- So pretty much what you do, and again, I'm not on the school committee, so I don't understand why, why this is done this way, because this is, this just doesn't make any sense to me. Why you wouldn't just put that person's name and their section of the budget, what they're getting paid?
May I?
Mr. Costa, please.
So when years passed, when we had budget constraints and we were advocating for a hundred percent of net school spending, there were occasions in which the committee had to make decisions about cuts within our operational budget. The committee had decided at that time that we'd rather cut a position or an FTE average rather than the name of the individual, because then it becomes politicized. So now, the way it's designed now, if the funding doesn't come through as anticipated or projected, and the committee's left with having to cut two FTEs from the high school, we can eliminate two FTEs. If the names are in a budget associated with them in that Durfee tab, then it becomes an issue of which one do you want to keep? Is it someone that someone may know, someone may not want to vote on that person? So if the superintendent had to come back to the committee, he's coming back to the committee and asking us to reduce the number of FTEs in that school by X amount.
Okay, so-
And so, and so, we provide the information, just as a issue of transparency, so, because committee members have, excuse me, councils have asked in years past, they want to know exactly what individuals are making, so we provide that information. But as far as our deliberation and our budget process, we do it based on FTEs. So you take the, the name and the individual, it doesn't become personal, because I personally have taken votes where the person's name has been mentioned.
Right.
And so, the committee didn't want to get into voting on a person as it did more an FTE or a position if it wasn't the-
And I, and I respect the position of you, Mr. Costa, and as the school committee's, I guess, policy for that. Here's what I have a challenging time. What year was that, Mr. Costa, where you, you came up with this new policy? Under a prior superintendent, under-
Prior superintendent, so I would say it probably goes back two thousand eight, during nine C cuts, I think that's my best recollection, and I think we continued it from that point going.
Okay. So I guess you would probably agree that the timing is a little different from where we are today versus where we were in two thousand and eight. And I think that we were looking at, and I wasn't here, I was actually, I think, almost graduating high school or thereabouts around that time, so it makes no difference to me. But I'm telling you that in two thousand and seven, two thousand eight, two thousand six, in that time period, you were looking at the nine C cuts, you were looking at drastic cuts. I remember there was fights between the city side and the school department side. There were, there were joint meetings with the school committee and the city council and trying to find a ways to give the school money, because you were issuing pink slips at the end of the year. Okay? We're under different times now, and the times that we're on now, that the mayor is, for the last couple of years, has been committing to over a hundred percent of net school spending, and we're continuously, because that's what we're hearing from them, continuing to give a hundred and one percent or over a hundred percent of net school spending, that's a question I can hold them accountable to, right?
I would agree with that statement as budgeted. They have committed in terms of budgeting that amount.
Right.
However, the end-of-the-year reports would show a different-
And we'll, and trust me, we'll have, this council, at least I for one, will have that discussion with them at that point, where it says, you know, you committed to a hundred and one percent, they're getting ninety-nine point nine or a hundred percent. Here's my concern, okay? Before us right now, except what I gotta do is I gotta go to each, how it's presented here is I gotta go to each position, and then I gotta go to the school and try to find out what that individual is making in FY nineteen. It doesn't make any sense.
But why would you be doing that?
Why would I be doing that?
It makes no sense to me why you'd be doing that.
You know what doesn't make sense to me, Mr. Superintendent? Why you have a person in your, in your budget, and the actual amount for that person, what they're getting paid in your school department, is not the correct number.
Because it's irrelevant, and you have the numbers.
But it's not irrelevant.
It is, it is in budget theory.
It's not, not in the city's budget theory, I mean, Mr. Superintendent-
I mean, how I do budgets.
Mr. Superintendent, I don't, the school department, I mean, look, I've never been on the school committee before, I know some colleagues of mine have been, but never have I ever seen a budget. I know this was, this happened last year.
And the year before.
Okay, great. But I'm, before me right now, Mr. Superintendent, is a budget that if you go to a person's name, it's a different amount. I gotta go play connect over here, I gotta find Human Resources, and then I gotta go find who the Human Resources person is and the amount.
That's, I mean, we can argue this offline if you want, but I just don't see it's a big issue. This is how we budget, and it works for us. And I'm sorry that you gotta jump between to find individual salaries, but it makes sense in terms of when we look at the entirety of the budget, for us, using FTE averages, which I learned to do many, many years ago, is the best way to zoo zero-based budget. I learned that in the Boston Public Schools.
Okay.
They were the first to do it in the state. I worked there at the time as a principal.
They were the first school to do zero-based budgeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So this, and, you know, I'll give you a book on zero-based budgeting, so you can understand some of that, it's, there isn't much literature out there on zero-based budgeting. But we use average FTE totals, because when you start, you're not, if you just said build from zero without a cap, you would end up skewed. So you have to have the cap of the actual dollar. So each school, let's say, we talked about Durfee at fifteen million, you gotta build a fifteen million, it's a ceiling, and once you hit fifteen million, you're done, because that's the total cost of that school from the prior year.
Yeah, I get that. I just have a disconnect in my mind, Mr. Superintendent, because I'm having a heck of a time trying, and I'm not, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll end this now, I'm having a hard time understanding why the city, and this isn't your problem, I guess it's mine, the city would present the City of Fall River, the city council a budget that has an individual's name and their exact amount. The school department does things a little differently. In two thousand and eight, when you had nine C cuts and under different financial circumstances, you didn't want, I remember, I had conversation with school committee people, and you were there, Mr. Costa, you had to cut a budget, the person dropped their bag, and they left your building, right? I was there, I saw it, okay? But we're under different financial times, and before us right now, unless I have to go to your, your index in the beginning of your budget, I don't look at this, my opinion, as zero-based budgeting. I look at this as a summary of FTEs, and that's how you determine your budget. I look for a budget with an amount and the exact amount for that individual's making. Because if I'm, because, and the reason why I'm, this has come to my attention, is because I've got phone calls from specific individuals in the school department who have seen these specific documents, and they say, counselor, I'm not making X amount that is said under my name.
And?
And-
I get it.
Under a budget detail?
Can I ask, under the budget detail or under the average of sixty-four thousand?
I'm talking about the specific page. If I go to any school, it's a consistent amount. Your leadership, your teachers, and your powers are all under the same amount.
Right.
Well, I guess we do-
But we do give the budget details as well, and you can pick that out.
Yeah, you just have two breakdowns, and it's confusing.
Can I just, a point of clarification, please? Hold on, I just wanna, let's see if I can remember what you said. You said that when you do Durfee High School, if they were at fifteen million, you budget to get to fifteen million?
Yes, so when we started three years ago, this process, we had to start with the actuals. Back then, it was FY sixteen's budget, FY seventeen, we started from FY seventeen, and I said, we're all, you know, we knew what we were gonna get, we're gonna get a hundred percent of net school spending. I mean, that's the history of the Fall River Public Schools. I could come in with a pie in the sky and say, oh, we need ten more million dollars, if I just built budgets. So we control it very differently. And we came and we built up to fifteen, and then there were some additional requests, they got all their positions in, things that they needed.
You built up to fifteen because that's what you needed to do then?
Yes, and there was probably be a little bit each year, there's a little bit more request, and we add that in the overall. Yeah, so you get to where we are, what we need.
So basically, it's not zero-based, it's fifteen million dollar based, because that's what we were last year.
It breaks out-
See, that's the whole purpose of zero-based budgeting.
Right, you have to start from zero.
You start from scratch.
From zero.
And you build what you need to-
And you start adding those positions, and they end up at-
Based on your needs.
Based on your needs.
Not based on fifteen million dollars that we were at last year.
It gets you your need, right.
That's what we want it to continue to be, year after year, if not higher. That's the difference, in my eyes. With that, I, thank you, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure I understood exactly what you said that we're talking about.
Thank you, Counselor, and I guess you see my confusion, maybe you don't, maybe you see that there's a little disconnect here?
No, but we can, I mean, when I can talk theory on budget at any time you want, I mean, this, this is something that, practice that we use that works for us. I understand that it may not be what you're used to, but it works for us.
Yeah, so, one last question. So, let me, let me just take this for instance. If I'm the principal at Durfee High School, right, and in this book before me right now, it says, I'm making eighty-seven thousand dollars, because that's what's here. It says eighty-seven thousand dollars attached to the individual's name, right?
It's an average, right?
It's an a, it's an average. But I'm not actually making eighty-seven, I'm making more or I'm making less than eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Why wouldn't you present a budget with the actual amount attached to the individual's name, like the city of, city council, the city's finance team does?
We feel that we do, it's just in the backing documents.
Right. So it's not really as transparent as, it's really not as transparent as we're used to seeing on the municipal side of the budget.
It's probably more transparent. This is pretty transparent.
Well, what, I'm not gonna go any further on here, because I'll tell you right now, I ain't getting any, I'm getting more and more confused as we're having this conversation, Mr. Superintendent.
I don't-
I don't see how there's trans-
But I don't recall these questions last year.
Well, we're here now, and I'm sorry if I'm asking, I didn't ask the questions last year, but I'm asking the questions now.
All right.
Do you wanna, do you-
It's fine, I mean, I can't explain it to you any other way, I've explained it to you the best I can.
And I'm not, I'm asking you to explain it any differently, I'm just telling you how I'm used to seeing a budget is different than the way you presented this budget. And I don't understand why there's frustration with that, because I'd have never, I've never seen a budget that, and maybe I did last year and I didn't see it, but you know what? This year, I got the phone call from individuals who were saying, you have a budget, and I'm not making what they're saying in that budget, I gotta go to an index sheet in the beginning of the budget to find the person's position, find their object code, find their organization number, and then I say, oh, okay, we're gonna link that person's name and that person's position to the budget. It doesn't make sense.
So I guess, I guess, as I'm sitting here, if we're gonna all be confused, my confusion is, the council's responsibility, as I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to approve the overall school department budget, not line by line.
Right, agreed.
So, so for you to have to go match up line by line, I'm not certain what would the, what would the, what would be the reason for having to do that?
To get the, to actually get the actual number associated with your salary for a specific school.
Right, and you have that in the details. You have what that person's actually being made in detail in the front of that binder. It's not hidden anywhere, it's not something you gotta go searching for with, you know, a directory, it, it's right there in the book. And I understand it may not make sense for this council, but it's not this council that has to work with that budget. It works well for the school department and the school committee members, because that's the process we've viewed for years. Now, if the council wants to see it in a different form, we'd be happy to, to, to provide that information to the council. If it makes it easier for the process, for deliberating whether or not to approve the school department's budget, we can provide it in any form you like, Counsel, with all due respect, I just, I, I just, I understand your frustration, it's not what the municipal side budget looks like.
Thank you, thank you.
But I bet, I guarantee if I picked up the municipal budget, I'd have a number of questions as to why certain things are done. But I don't, I don't, I don't oversee the municipal budget, I don't have any dealings with the municipal budget. The one that you have before us, when it comes to the school department's budget, works for the school committee, it works for the school administration, and that's the one we've been using.
And that's fine, and, and, and I agree with you, I have a number of questions when it comes to this budget, right? And by no means am I trying to overstep my duties as a city councilor and try to step in your shoes as a school committee individual. I just want you to understand from the city's side, from my side as a councilor, I'm, I understand you're not trying to hide it, make that crystal clear, Mr. Costa.
Right.
Members of your team, I understand you're not trying to hide what people are making, you're trying to be conservative if you have to cut FTEs versus individuals, okay?
Correct.
That was two thousand eight lingo, though, in my opinion. That was under different circumstances financially.
Right.
Not under those financial constraints like we were in two thousand eight.
Right, but the reality is, we were pink slipping people right up to three years ago. And so, I understand we're in a different financial situation, I couldn't agree with you more. And I, and I respect the fact that the administration has made an effort to budget above the required net school spending, because we've had years where they, even the budgeted number didn't meet a hundred percent, let alone over a hundred percent. So I appreciate their efforts in that, and I appreciate the council's continued support year after year to make sure that we get at least a hundred percent, because that's what the law requires. But I, I, I understand the questions, Counsel, if it makes it easier or, or makes the process smoother going forward, we'd be happy to have that conversation with our colleagues in government. If there's a different way that the, the budget can be presented that makes things on your end, you know, clearer, if you will, I could tell you that the committee will direct the superintendent and Mr. Almeida to make that information available to you if, if that's helpful. I, I just, again, and again, I'm not saying you're trying to nitpick.
I'm not, in any way, shape, or form.
I just, you're trying to understand that, I get it. And if you got the calls from those individuals, it makes sense, if you look, I don't make eighty-four thousand, they probably don't.
Right.
But it was an average that you used, and if, if they really wanted to see their salary, they could go to the front of the binder, it would break it down, that number comes directly out of munis. It's, it's, it's how they get paid.
Okay, so let me ask this question, okay? So if, let's say there's, do you have excess money at the end of the year for salaries under specific schools, because you've budgeted under, let's just say, one specific school, you have an amount of four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in total granted FTEs? So if you, if you have extra, extra money associated with that at the end of the year, where does that go?
So I will say this, and I'll let Mr. Almeida give you the minutia of it, but my understanding of it, yes, because there is breakage in salaries, we have loose people mid-year, we may have a vacancy, an unanticipated vacancy, that money's there. Depending on whether or not that position's filled, or what salary amount we fill it at, there is some, what they call, breakage within the budget. That stays in the professional salaries line, if it's needed in that line, we use it, if not, there are times with, with, within a fiscal year that the committee will make a decision, if there's another part of the budget that unanticipated expenses, and that budget line is exceeded, we may transfer money from a professional line into another line within that budget, not exceeding the total number, of course, but Ms. Almeida can break that down further. But to answer your question, yes, because we use averages, and depending on what time, what step a person comes in within a union contract, that may determine whether or not we have additional funds, or sometimes, if it's a critical needs position, we have to hire them at a higher rate, it may draw, it may be above the average.
So, right, and I get that. So theoretically, you will say that you would have excess money in, in some cases, and I'm not saying excess money to return, I'm talking about excess money for salaries. Because you do an average, you have excess money in your salary line items per school department, right? Did you have excess money in the current fiscal year that we're in right now in salaries?
There was probably a couple positions that we filled late that gave us some breakage, but we, we take the entire salary, so we take all teachers.
Right.
Let's say it equals a hundred dollars, and we have ten teachers. The average FTE is ten dollars each.
Right.
It still equals the total being spent, but that's why we use it when we build from zero.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, but I understand what you're saying. It makes zero sense what this does.
Ten, ten dollars.
Zero.
Times ten teachers equals a hundred dollars. You wanna see one makes thirteen and one makes seven.
Right, because that's what, right, why, why is it that-
That's awesome, but you don't build your budget based on the actuals. You build your budget based on the averages, getting to the total actual, and you give your backing documents.
Okay. I'll let my colleagues ask additional questions, because I don't want to waste any more time. I just look at a budget here, a little different than you present your budgets. I respect what you do, you have a great school committee, you have a great finance team. What I'm telling you is, I'd like to look at a budget and an individual's name attached to it, and what they're making. I, we're not in a position right now that we're, you're, you're issuing pink slips at the end of the year like the prior administration has.
Well, that's because of the good work of this committee over the last three years, using zero-based budgeting.
Okay. Here's my question for you, Mr. Superintendent, Ms. Almeida, and Mr. Pacheco. Do you have everything that you need in this budget as presented to the city council right now that will get you through the entire year with no issues?
What we've requested, which was 160 million, 101% of the governor's number.
So you have everything that you need?
Not right now, because we're waiting for that final rectification of the House and the Senate. Right now, we've been appropriated 100% of the governor's number. The House is above that, and the Senate is twice as much. We hope it's rectified in the middle and we get at least 100%.
What if it's more? Just curious, from the city's perspective, what if it's more?
If it's more, we could always do more work in looking at second language programming and continue class size reduction.
Any discussions with this, if it, and again, this is all hypothetical. I get that. This whole budget's hypothetical. But if there is more money and there's this financial issue with the transportation, is there any, is there any thoughts of, of, of putting any additional money towards transportation costs?
So the transportation is non-net school eligible, it's on your side of the ledger, that's, no matter what, if we spent any money on transportation, it wouldn't count towards the governor's.
No doubt about that. I'm just wondering. I'm just, I'm just asking, because, look, I understand, and I'm fully supporting the school, whatever happens with the transportation aspect, I'm happy that you rebid it. I know there's some issues with, with respect to that. But at the end of the day, if the city council or this, this finance team appropriates $10 million for transportation this year, this week, or next week, and it comes in at $11 million, I know the school, school's gonna be paying another million dollars. The ci, the city is gonna be paying that additional overage on the transportation. I get it, it's a non-net school spending out of the offense. I know the city's responsible for that. I guess my only question was, you have a number in your mind that you've balanced your budget and you worked your budget. If for some reason there was additional monies that you received in excess to what you've budgeted for, you're gonna just utilize that money in other areas and other services, whether it's technology or infrastructure, something like that.
Technology, infrastructure, and class size reduction would be the three top priorities that we would have. But I'm also a realist. I don't know how, how high that figure would be, given where the House and the Senate are right now.
Okay, all right.
But it, but we would, of course, be able to work in partnership with the city on a couple of things that we wanna do in terms of infrastructure and those kinds of things that would be net school spending eligible.
Which we've done with the one-time money.
I know you have, yeah.
2.6 million. We've allocated some of that money to assist with the city in terms of capital projects.
Yes, you have.
They might, might not be able to fund within their operational, but, within their operational budget. May have to do a, you know, loan order for, but we would continue. And if, if the structure was such that we were to get additional funding and we had all the needs met, if we could do that for, toward transportation, that's something we could consider. But a, as it stands right now, the law doesn't allow for us to use it towards, towards a non-net school spending eligible item.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Mr. Almeida, what was the amount of money in excess salaries in this fiscal year that you're looking at? Do you have that number handy?
No.
Now, do you have a budgeted in this fiscal year that was gonna be before us in 2020, if there's gonna be any excess monies in salaries?
I, I couldn't tell you what, what it's gonna be for next year. It's all based on who's sitting in the seats and who's working next year, and how that all plays out over the course of the year.
Okay. All right, I yield. I've got as many questions possibly answered as I could get answered. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Counselor, seat one. Counselor, please.
Thank you. Just to, I guess, piggyback on my colleague's statement. You know, I think part of the problem is that we keep throwing zero-based budgeting out there when both the city and the school side are not doing zero-based budgeting. That's the reality. I know it's a catchphrase. We want, for some, some reason, the last two years, we, we felt like, if we say zero-based budgeting, everybody would think we're doing a great job. But, you know, we, we gotta get past that. I think probably some clarifying points to probably assist with the president's line of questioning is, just my own suggestion to you folks, is that when you're doing your budget, if you wanna do the average, when you're going into the schools, just don't assign the names to the school and just use an FTE number, like the number of teachers. I think the confusion now becomes is that when you go to, I'm gonna say the Fonseca school, because that's the one I picked up. When you go there and you have a list of names with the teachers all going down the list, and you're taking the average, people are going, looking at it, assuming that, okay, that's what they're making. And while you might have a list somewhere else along the line to where their real salary is, they're just looking at it as if, well, I'm not making the 85, so that, you know, there's some discrepancies, and, and I think that's where we get it in, get into the line of question that we just got into. But if you took the Fonseca and said, there's seven teachers and list seven teachers, teacher 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, average salary of 85, and then have a tab later on that has every single teacher and employee with their actual list not identified at the school, then that gives you the breakdown that you're looking for for the salaries, that you can kinda tie it out to salaries and things like that. So, that's just coming from my own standpoint. I think that might have helped some of this conversation moving forward. In, in terms of net school spending, can you just, I followed you, I lost you a little bit. So, with, the current net school spending number required is the 159,71,986, right?
Yes.
Okay, so what's, what you're requesting?
So, that's not, it's not really the 100%. That's 100% of the governor's number.
Right, right. And that's gonna change depending on what the final budget's numbers are gonna be. What we're dealing with is just the House numbers that we have here based on your, your presentation. And you're, you're looking for 160? Is that what you're, 160,662,706?
Yes.
Right? So, the 104, the 104,926,128 dollars that, that's being appropriated on the city's side gets you to the 160, right? Not to the 159?
No. That's 1.7 million dollars less than what the school committee has requested.
How much was that, Mr. Superintendent?
Oh, I see, 'cause they're, they're at 100% and you're at 101.
Yeah.
Can you say that number again, Mr. Superintendent?
So, so the number that was appropriated by the school committee for the school operating budget was 106,642,648. The budget in front of you is 104,926,128. The difference is 1,716,520.
So if everything, if everything stood equal right now, as we, if, and the governor's numbers were passed, we're 1.7 million dollars short on the school department's recommendation, right? That, what you folks.
Yes, correct.
And then in terms of transportation, you, you folks, I knew you threw out the bid, so we're at the 10.1. Is that, is that what you folks feel that you're gonna need in terms of transportation, or do you?
No, no, you're looking at me.
You're the only one looking.
No, 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 you're looking at me, so I, I can give you my best answer for that. So we, we initially approved 11.9, and that was based on the original projection for transportation for next year. As a result of that, obviously, that number was, was egregiously high. And so, based on what we heard from the council and obviously from, from others, including the administration regarding what, what the city was able to afford going forward next year, we went out and took the responsible bidders that we had and negotiated with them. And as a result, was able to gain some additional savings that got us to around 10.1. Obviously, as the council's aware, there were some issues with that process, timing, length of time it took to complete the process. The fact of whether or not there was some change that would have substantially changed the bid specs, so it would've been unfair for others that didn't get a chance to bid on. The conversations were being had, number of bus routes, buses needed, et cetera. The committee rescinded its 11.9 million dollar transportation vote and adopted a 10.1 million dollar. That's where it stands right now. Now, obviously, you know, we just went out to rebid, so who knows if it'll be 10.1 or it'll be 11.1. At this point, we don't know. But the committee's on record sending what we felt was a recommendation based on what we knew at the time of being 10.1 million dollars for next year's transportation.
So if the bids come in and continue to, to remain as they were before, the 10.1 would cover?
Or if they come lower, then the city certainly got a surplus, which would be great, but we won't know that until obviously the bids are in and looked at and voted on.
And that's due to the, the tiering and the routing, 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 the new routes and the tiering and the.
Bell schedules.
And the, and the bell schedules. So, I think that we're in a good place that the bid that went out is actually a new bid, with a new set of criteria where you're able to strip some things down. And we're hopeful that we're gonna come in at a, a place that's doable for one year and fix some more things, and then go for a long-term bid the following year.
So I, I have, I've got one other question on transportation, but I, I do have questions for the administration if they can.
Yeah, sure.
Come down and make their way down while I finish.
Down to the administrative.
The transportation piece. So I happened to catch, and I don't often watch the school committee meetings, but I, I happened to catch the, the last meeting, or it was the meeting before. So there were, there were some discussions about the van contracts, the van contracts that came before the city council, which was, I believe, was over a three-year contract. I think it was a five-year contract that we originally approved. That was, that was held up in the mayor's office. I'm, I'm a little confused about why the mayor was not signing off on this contract, 'cause as, as I, and I'm just gonna tell you from, from my standpoint, where I, where I personally sit and how I feel this, this goes, and I, I just got some questions in terms of contracts and who signs off on contracts. The authorization to enter into contracts on the school side is the school committee. You, you folks sign off. The only reason it came over to us was because it was extending past the three-year period, right? So anything over three years requires a legislative body approval. At that point, I don't know that the executive office can hold up contracts on the school side when it has nothing to do, and on, nor does it have jurisdiction over the school department. So I'm, I'm concerned as to why that was already approved and then kicked out.
Mr. Superintendent?
So the, my understanding is the language in the con, in the charter is very clear that no contract in this, in the city period is binding until it has the mayor's signature.
Is that ordinance or is that charter?
Madam Clerk, can you clarify that if you know off the top of your head? Is that accurate? We'll have, we'll have the clerk look it up as you continue.
And I would also just request, I think that charter would, would circumvent the school committee's authority, and I don't think you can do that. I mean, the charter can't circumvent Massachusetts general law, so that would definitely be a, a circumvention of, of the.
Powers.
Executive body, which would be, at this point, the school committee, entering into a contract to have one individual, you've got seven members, the mayor being one, agreeing to a contract, and then you have one individual on the opposite side of, of the body saying, I don't wanna sign a contract. But I mean, that, to me, violates the, the authority that is given under Chapter 70, so.
My understanding.
That's just.
So, so my understanding of the process is we did take that vote, I, I assumed that that piece was done from where we sat. We had a meeting after that, and we were advised by the purchasing agent that there was an issue with it, or the administration had perceived there was an issue with the contract, and, and at that point, there were no signatures to execute that contract.
And so, so Madam Clerk, through, through you, if we, if I could get a, a copy of all the contracts that have been approved and signed by the mayor since the charter has come in, outside of his, his signatures as the, obviously, the chairman of the school committee, but individually as the executive officer of the, of the city? I'm just, I'd be interested to see that. Just, just going back now, outside of transportation, just going back to the net school spending. So when I look at page 273 of the budget book that you folks have submitted to us.
Schools or city?
The schools, I'm sorry. So it's under education, the education tab. The, under the, the FY19, I know we made the transfer of some monies this fiscal year to cover net school spending, but the 1.1 million that's for the operating expense says over net school spending. So, is that, is that an accurate description of that line item?
Yes, counselor, I believe that was the original amount that was over net school spending. The two $1 million transfers, as well as, I believe it was 608, was reduced from the school operating expenses in Munis when the budget adjustment was put in. So we're really looking at the 99,488 total.
So that, so we would be at 101% in net school spending? Because roughly a percentage is about a, a million, billion and a half?
The, the intention is that we would have been at 101% for fiscal 2019. As the school committee or the school department stated earlier, there is still going to be a reconciliation for health insurance as it is still coming in lower than anticipated by both the school department and the city when the 19 budget was put together.
Okay. So just now focusing on to the FY20 budget, what was the administration's logic coming into 100% of the net school spending versus the initial request of 101 for the school department?
Initially, it was as a result of, one, meeting 100% of net school spending, and, two, looking at the increase that was going to be significant in education from the prior year operating expense to the current year 100%.
So we're only committing, so we're only gonna commit to 100? Is that what the administration's prepared to commit to?
We're only committing to 100% in this budget. That's correct.
So what happens when, I know the Senate numbers are higher, or, I, I don't know exactly where we stand. At least, the House numbers are higher, I know that, and the Senate higher, Senate numbers are even higher than that. So when that averages out, we're obviously gonna get some additional Chapter 70 monies, but that's also gonna increase our net school spending numbers. So, which means that we're also gonna have to kick in some additional monies, which may not be, obviously, I, I, at least not. So if I'm looking, if I'm looking at the percentage, when we look at net school spending, Chapter 70 funding equates for about 80% of the funding of the net school spending. So I would assume that we'd be about 20% short if whatever number of the new net school spending number comes out, right? If, if the logic holds true.
Well, we would, we would certainly, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out, because the local, the unrestricted local aid isn't gonna go anywhere. I think, I think the, the House.
It's pretty flat. That's correct.
It's right. It's not a whole lot there. So there's not enough significant monies coming in that we can just then kick over to the school department. So, we would either be less than 100% in net school spending for this fiscal year, meaning that we would have to make it up in the next fiscal year, or we would have to find some additional revenues to try to adjust to meet the, at least the 100% in net school spending.
All of that is, is correct. We would have to look at what the new foundation budget is and look at the amount that comes out of conference committee, and then make that determination. If you remember last year, counselor, we had to do similar, but there were, were no additional monies that had to come from the city's side. The increase in the Chapter 70 went over to the school department in an appropriation in July or August, and it was sufficient to cover the increase in the Chapter 70 and net school spending calculation. It was only 300 and some odd thousand, but it was sufficient.
Have we targeted, or do you have any ideas as to how you're gonna address that shortfall, if there is one?
If, if, in fact, it comes out of conference committee and it's all related to Chapter 70, it would be assumedly our intention to provide the school department with an additional appropriation.
Okay. And then, finally, obviously, it's just, and, and you may not have the answer to this, but I know we've got the new, we've got 70 new positions coming in. So what's, what's the breakout of, of the budget? How much is of it salaries? Was it 90%? Is it a 90, 10, 80, 20?
About 80, 20.
About 80, 20. So 80, 80% salaries, 20 expenses. And I talk about this every, every single year. I, the sustainability of the school department budget is, is really a significant concern, especially for gateway cities that are struggling to meet 100% of net school spending. So, just trying to hope we don't hit it, but, you know, when you, when you're in the government arena, there is, it's very cyclical, right? So, last time we saw a 9C cuts or a recession was, was back in the 08, 09 timeframe with the 09C cuts. So, at some point, we're gonna be hitting that, and when we're 80% relying on, on Chapter 70 to, to meet, help meet our net school spendings, and when we're not really, really above the 101, what do we, I guess, what are you folks doing to make sure that we're not having those major layoffs and what have, these 70 new positions that we're hiring are sustainable for the, for the future?
Budget, as you mentioned, budgets are cyclical in terms of the ups and downs of, of where you're funded. Now, we talked about gateway cities. There's only actually three gateway cities that are at 100 or below. It's us, Springfield, and, and New Bedford. They're both below 100. We're at 100 in FY19. The average across the state's 127. There's three competing bills on, on the Hill right now to change the foundation formula. Our foundation formula's gonna work out in our favor going forward because of the number of second language learners, because of our poverty rate, and because we're actually growing. We've got about 100 and something more kids than we did last year. If we can continue that, this, this budget moving forward for the next several years will be healthy. The positions that we're putting in, we review each year. Do we need them or do we not need them? And that's how we're gonna manage strategically a funding cliff. And we also talked about how pulling positions off the grants, which is a real cliff that we see each year, is really gonna help us in the long term. Plus, at the same time, you know, we're building into this budget each year now, higher contingency, higher preventative maintenance. Class size reduction is a placeholder. So we have some places where we have contingency, thinking about what we can do and what can't we do. But I think that the, you're, you hit the nail on the head when you think about managing your budget to make sure that you're meeting the needs of the kids. But as the system grows, it's gonna require additional investments in positions. We are not being greedy in any way in terms of what we're requesting, or what I've requested of the, of the school committee. Each one of these positions is rationalized, and that's really the value in the process, in terms of value add. And as I said, each year, we can figure out what we can live with and what we can't, and that's where the conversion process will be.
Yeah. And, and I've, I've maintained this, I think, president, I think it was the president and one of the former colleagues went up to the State House to, to argue transportation, and transportation should be part of net school spending, right? Because that's $10 million on the table. And, you know, unfortunately, a lot of the legislative individuals that are on the educational piece just don't see the actual needs that, or, or the factors that come into play to get a, a student to school. When you're, when you're a community that's at 126% of net school spending, or 130, 140, and transportation doesn't become an issue, right? When you're a gateway city at 100% and you're trying to get students and student achievement and graduation rates and the attendance rates up, if you can't get the student to school, then you're not gonna be able to teach them. So, to me, transportation is a fundamental part of net school spending, or should be, because without getting a child to school, you'll never be able to, to educate them. It's kinda fell on deaf ears, and I know they've changed the foundation formula or looking to do that. Hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to see that. The only thing I would obviously urge is constant communication between the two administrations to really kinda talk about where we stand with revenue projections and expenses, because a, a city that is so reliant on state aid, when, when the state revenue numbers are not there, we're just gonna be at their mercy in terms of cuts coming down. And 9C cuts that come down in mid-year, which are even more drastic than cuts at the beginning of the year. So, I mean, we've seen it before. You know, I, I've served on that side, and I think when Mr. Costa and I came on for the first, you know, five or six bu, budgets, we were, we were looking at. looking at cuts to the tune of, you know, 1.5 to $2 million a year, given pink slips across the board. So it's a very, very challenging time when you have to do that. So hopefully, now that we've got some revenue here, that we're looking at the sustainability of this stuff to make sure that we're not back in that position. So I'll leave it at that, and I want to, you know, thank my colleagues in government over on the school side for doing your due diligence over there. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. In seat four, Counselor Kilby.
First of all, welcome, thank you for coming.
Your microphone, Counselor.
I'm actually very excited about this budget.
Your microphone, Counselor.
Oh, I'm sorry. No problem. I'm actually very excited about this budget. We're building a new high school in this city. I was on a school committee for 10 years, and I don't recall ever, I may be wrong, but 70 new positions that we're putting together. Hopefully, that's drastically going to help our class size. So before I ask my questions to Council President, questions about the budget, the framing of the budget itself, for my clarification, if I'm wrong, but the budget items in the yellow, you start with an average, that's how you begin your budget process, correct? Okay? And the more specific numbers that have changed are a result of the matrix, right? As a result of years of service, as a result of professional credit, you know, so when you see a teacher's all at 64, and you see teachers and other administrators at higher and lower numbers, that's because some are making, going to make a little more and some are going to make less--
Correct.
--based on those issues.
Correct.
So this is the first, when you framed your budget, Mr. Almeida, the items in the yellow was your beginning, your starting point?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, Mr. Superintendent, back to the new positions, I was going to also make a comment with regard to the stability of sustaining these positions, because I too was on the committee at a time when we lost a lot of good people in the city as a result of uncertainty each and every year in terms of whether they're going to have a job or not. But in my mind, if you could just articulate, as much time as it takes, specifically what these positions are going to be, and I'm hoping, as you said, a large majority are going to be teacher assistants, because during those tough times, the teacher assistants were the first to go, and they're the biggest bang for the buck, I'm sure you all agree, with the amount of time they put in, and especially a teacher assistant who wants to aspire to be a teacher. So if you could go over that with me, Mr. Superintendent, the specific positions.
So in your budget binder, in the summary page, it's on the second page, explains the FY20, what we call program improvements, and it articulates straight up and down--
Forgive me if I didn't examine that.
So, so we have many paraprofessionals, we have teachers, we have some administrative administrators, like, for example, the Spencer Board is going to get a second vice principal based on size--
Can you give me some numbers on teacher assistants and teachers, please? If you don't, I can get it at a later date.
20, 20 maybe?
Yeah.
And we have some curriculum directors, each year I've been adding a new nurse, we have some social, emotional folks who are Saks, we have some part-time custodians and safety officers, additional attendance officer. There's a lot of support--
Yeah, I'm excited about it.
--for schools and classrooms. And we're very, very happy about the, you know, again, trying to maintain zero to kindergarten to third grade, trying to get to that 26.
Where are we with the class size?
Well, we've been able--
Elementarys.
--the school committee's been able to get there each year over the last two years, or the last three years in terms of class size. Well, this will be the third year, I guess, of seeing if we can continue to maintain that. We had zero, from kindergarten through second grade, the class sizes were at 26. We may add one that went to 27 at one point, but then it went back to 26. We have class size reduction positions. Our biggest problem will be moving forward is space, but Ken and his team are working right now to move out some storage units at Henry Lord School, which will free up some classroom space, so we continue to add classrooms where we can. We're seeing the greatest migration into the city on the south side, so that things to make sense. We do have, again, I use that 26-figure K to three, four, and five, of course, get higher. I got class sizes, you know, dirty in some cases and high. I try to put some pairs in when we can. Building pairs are usually the best. Teacher absenteeism has been better, pair absenteeism hasn't been as good, so when a pair is out, I got to pull from other places, particularly around 101, so that gets challenging. I did, each building this past, the school committee approved, I believe it was a year ago, each building also has a building sub that's there every day that we can utilize to help support as needed--
Reduce the sub line.
And it has reduced the substitute teacher line, because attendance has been better, and we've been able to do that.
Do you still have the in-house suspension program?
Okay, great question. The answer is, we have the program, I don't have--
I'll stop you there.
--I don't have in-house suspension teachers.
I found that that was a tremendous asset, I'm sure Mr. Coogan would--
But principals have been using their building subs to help run. We're also finding that in-house suspension is good, but also this concept of Saturday school is another deterrent that we use in our progressive discipline practices that count as a consequence.
Can I just add, if I may, Counselor Kilby, so you raised the point about those new positions, just to give you a background as to how that evolves.
Yeah.
There's a very thoughtful process that goes into that, starts with the superintendent. And obviously, our building principals come before the finance subcommittee, Mr. Coogan, myself, and Mr. Martins. We have budget hearings, and at those times, the principals are articulating for the subcommittee what their needs are and why, and sort of reviewing their school data, making sure that if their areas of concern or needs that the school has from one year over the next, they're trying to address that. And some of that is through additional positions. So some of the positions for pairs, ESL support, that all comes and is driven by building leaders. And so those principals are coming and articulating, we're asking them questions, sort of getting, gauging from them how they plan to use these positions, whether it's a conversion or a new position. And so as that process evolves, the committee's deciding whether or not it's going to be supportive ultimately in our overall budget to propose those positions. So it really starts at the ground level. Principals are really talking with their staff, evaluating their data year over year, deciding what areas of concern they have and how to mitigate that in the future year. And so some of that is in positions, some of that is in additional administrative support. As those conversations are happening, that's where you'll get a list of potential new positions year over year. And to the point that I've heard, the committee's cognizant about the financial climate and whether or not we blow out our school department budget. A lot of these proposed positions, it's contingent upon what the climate calls for. And so we're aware of that, and obviously, in tight fiscal times, I've served as the Chair of the Vice, excuse me, Finance Subcommittee, where we've been frank with principals and said, I understand there's a need, however, the financial climate doesn't call for additional positions, and they understand that and they work with what they have. But that'll give you just a little background as to how some of those positions evolved.
And that term thoughtful, I think, is poignant, because I do try to watch some of the meetings, and some of your, you're still like Chairman of Finance, and I do see a thoughtful process.
So there's a connection between the positions and why they're needed?
Exactly.
There's a conversation having, there's checks and balances, we're having those conversations with building principals, superintendent's vetting those recommendations and making the decisions, and ultimately, if he's going to bring those forward to the full committee.
Thank you. Is there any carryover from this year's budget? Again, I'm hocken to the days, I was on the committee, sometimes it'd be as much as $900,000 to a million dollars that could be carried over to the next year?
Two things. One, I just want to answer your earlier question, there's 28 pairs in the--
Oh, that's true.
--proposed request. In terms of carryover, the only revolving funds that we have are our student activity funds and that's it, and our building rental, and that's it. So we're not allowed to carry forward funds from one fiscal year. If there's money to return, it gets returned to the city.
Oh, okay. I was unaware of that. Time to change.
Consensus, one point of information.
We haven't been in our positions.
So you can roll over on special education, right, for special tuition and books?
It's prepaid.
So those are two line items, so I think that's what Counselor in seat four was alluding to.
But I do recall $800,000, $1,000,000 a year that could be rolled over, so. So back to Driffy High School, on time, under budget. So I drive by there every day, I see a lot of activity, the weather's been great.
The weather's been great, we've been able to, Ken and I were out there today, the entirety of the foundation perimeter is now poured, with the construction crews are finalizing some of the footings in the interior, which will be done soon, steel will be coming in at the start of July. One of the pieces that's taken a little longer that folks don't see is all the underground plumbing. So it's the sewage and the drainage, and then the conduit electrical is also inlaid within that. Yes, just today, we began, or maybe it was yesterday, we began the retro of the Luke Urban Fieldhouse, so that project now is starting. And the way that will work is summers and holiday breaks over the next two, two and a half years until that is entirely done, but we're going to see a large portion of that completed this year. So if you, the construction cam is now up and operational, you can watch it. If you don't have that link, I'll make sure you get that.
I still go to the building meetings, because I want to see what's going on. We are not going over budget. We are not--
Well, I remember during the last campaign, that was a big issue--
Yeah, it is a big issue, and I want the public to know we're not going over budget. And as far as the 70 new positions, the public has to understand that that's a significant increase in state funding that's driving those positions. It's not additional money from the state, although some of it is. The majority of it is state money that's being given to the gateway cities. It's not, I don't want people saying, oh, they're hiring 70 new people, because it's going to cost us extra. That's not the way it is.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Brad.
Teacher attendance, I know it's, in the past, it's been more challenging at the high school, it hasn't been as challenging in elementary school for some reason, and I'm just wondering how that's trending.
So last year, we were up by about a percentage point about the average the year before, we're tracking about the same. It's, teacher attendance has been strong, the high school has been much better than it has been years ago.
Yeah, we had an older staff back then.
But also, I know there was a lot of turnover, but the last couple of years at the high school, I'm really impressed, I mean, you know, we have 180 faculty members in that one building, and there's days that I've only had five people out, and we've been averaging sometimes, you know, 98% at the high school, which is, which is really impressive. It's pretty much, you know, every day, we could have between three and eight schools at 100% attendance, we'd like to tweak that out, and we've been awarding people for their hard work in that way.
Okay, that's it for me for now. I may have some more questions later, but I'll end by saying, I think you're very fortunate, Mr. Superintendent, you have a great school committee. And I'm not just saying that to make friends here, very highly intelligent, educated people with educational backgrounds, and I think you're all fortunate to have each other, and kudos to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said, Counselor. Counselor, in seat six, Counselor Long.
Good evening. I'm going to be brief, but I'll kind of look at this in a much more simple manner. When we're talking about transportation, and we can talk about the money, but we're talking about tearing the roots, what's the earliest that any student will be picked up and what's the latest they'll be returned home? Is there, is there, do you have a cutoff on that that says this is as far as we'll go?
Well, as far as contractually, the hours of the day are already bound.
What are they?
So we have a window. Depending on the age group, schools can't stop before a certain 7:25, I think, is the earliest elementary.
Is it earliest pickup?
The earliest elementary start time. So you figure that we keep our bus routes, we try to keep them under 45 minutes, well, we do keep them under 45 minutes, we try to get them closer to the half hour, 35 minute runs. So, and basically, on the other side, you also have the same turnover. So the tiering doesn't force us to go later, because a tiering bus is basically picking up one route, dropping one route off, going to the next route. So we don't have two schools riding the same bus at the same time, so nobody's getting that longer ride. We basically moved bell schedules.
But you could have one, you could have one bus within the system doing two routes, doing maybe an elementary route and then maybe a high school route--
Well, but not together.
Not, yeah.
Yeah, so they're dropping them off, so no student is riding the bus extra time because of the tiering.
Okay. Yeah, I was just concerned about that, because we had some people come before us and saying that their children were being picked up late to really getting home.
The issue is, is we do have some situations, as we all know, the bounds of this city, especially the reservation, you know, going to Dartmouth to get to Fall River, you're going to have some time on the road, and that is the situation at that. So our longest runs of the day, two situations, Gate and also the reservation. So going up to the Copacot, to Yellow Hill and Indian Town, that's a long run, but it is still under an hour, and most of them are under 45 minutes. We've also added, as part of that, trying to mitigate some of those issues, we've added some extra buses that we will run, our vans, our 7D vans, so that we'll be breaking up some of those routes that may run closer to that 45, 55 minute. We'll be breaking those down so that we can get them lower. So those start times for those standout times for those students, we're going to try and roll back about 15 minutes.
All right. Now, I'm sitting here and I'm looking at, we're starting a discussion on budgets, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when we're talking about net school spending, we're already, as far as the city budget is concerned, we're already under what's projected in the governor's budget, and you're projecting that that's even going to go up when either the Senate or the House come down? So our number right now that we're working on is a deficit, or underfunded?
Our number that we're working on is the governor's number, which is the responsible place to start the budgeting conversation, but in a Republican administration, it's usually the floor and the Senate, the ceiling, and then the House and the Senate compromise, and we end up somewhere in the middle, and the governor signs that. So that process is playing itself out on the Hill. I was hoping it would be done before tonight, but it's not, and we'll know shortly what the final--
No, I'm just saying that number is, we're expecting that number to go up, which is a good thing.
Yeah, I'm expecting that number to go up.
I'm saying from our side of the equation, we have underfunded that. Is that, am I wrong there?
Not yet. Until the final number, we won't know truly what our obligation is going to be--
The final number is going to be more than what we're talking about right here.
Correct.
So we're underfunded.
Correct. Well, potentially.
If we pass this budget tonight--
Right.
--we've underfunded it, because that number's going to change, and it's going to go up.
The Counselor's question is regarding the appropriate, school appropriation number that's before us of the 104 million--
Mm-hmm.
--versus the number that you've discussed, there's a contrast of about $1.7 million. So I believe that's the Counselor's question.
And I'm correct in assuming that, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm not real clear on the transportation costs, that we've come down to a 10.1 million, is that correct?
Yes.
But we don't have a contract for 10.1 million, because that's going out to bid.
We have no contracts right now.
So that's going out to bid, and that could be a little bit more than 10.1 million. All right, so that's another one that we get out there. All right, so we're a million seven plus. Now, I have another question, and I think this will go to the city administration. When we talk about the medical expense cost, there was a, I guess, a blip this year where we got money back, and thank God, the expense wasn't as high as it was in past years, and we recognized the savings in that. What are we using in this budget for a number on that medical expense? Is it with the savings that we saw this year, or is that been tweaked a little bit to look at more a realistic number? Or where is that coming in? Or what do we use, and how do we get there?
So two things, just to bring you back to the first thing you said, we are not underfunding the budget as we currently stand, it's at 100% of the governor's budget. If we were to receive, or if the city receives additional monies out of the conference committee, there'll be monies, new monies to be appropriated to the school department for which we will have a revenue source, additional municipal revenue that we will bring forward to you. So we're not undercutting their budget at this particular point at 100%. They're looking for 101, we're at 100%. As for the health insurance, Mr. Almeida has calculated the health insurance based on what he believes the health insurance is going to be with an increase over the current year, plus an estimate for the additional positions, and that particular amount, that dollar amount, has been populated in the net school spending calculation. calculation. And as you know, health insurance can vary millions of dollars from one year to the next. So, you know, we're back to, and I know I've said this a zillion times, and I know the school committee doesn't want to hear it from me, but I'm going to say it again. It's the biggest amount in the net school spending calculation, and if the health insurance was 100% on the school committee's budget, or within the school committee's budget, we wouldn't have these fluctuations year to year on the end of the year report. And that's, I know nobody wants to hear that.
We don't mind hearing it. We just don't agree that that's the way it should be. But we've listened to it respectfully, but we just, and it has been on the school's side. Health insurance has been on our side.
One year.
Yeah, but that's not for tonight. I don't mind getting into that.
But at any rate, but my point to you, Counselor, is we cannot determine what the end result of net school spending is going to be until 12 months' worth of health insurance bills are received because it's a $24 million expense. And there is no way of knowing now. We do our best, Mr. Almeida and myself, Mrs. Coelho and the HR department, we do our best to estimate what health insurance is going to come in at. We were very fortunate where Mrs. Viveras and Mrs. Coelho did a lot of work in carving out some drug costs this past year. That was a big reason for some of the savings, and we had healthier employees. And so, you know, that was a good year, but we don't know what next year is going to bring.
I agree.
But we don't want anyone to believe we're going into the year either overestimating health insurance or underestimating health insurance. We do our best based on the data we receive from the consultant that we utilize and prior year historical data, and would it to calculate what we believe that health insurance number is going to be. So I take offense to you saying that we're going into the year with a deficit.
Well, I don't mean to offend. I'm just looking at what I'm hearing. I'm just repeating what I'm hearing. You might not like the way I put it, but it's the way I see and what I've interpreted from what's been going on here. But what I don't understand on that is you say, well, if it does go up, we have a revenue source. Is this a?
It will be state aid. There'll be additional state aid.
Oh, okay. All right. I thought you were saying we had some other revenue source that was going to come forward.
It'll be the additional state aid that will be coming in from the conference committee.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think you guys do a tremendous job. I think the school department's doing wonderful. I'm glad to hear the 70 positions are basically going to be, for the most part, the majority are going to be in classrooms, helping kids. We definitely need it. I see it. It really, when you start looking at the numbers that we hear from you, and what I see on the other side, I see a disconnect when we're talking about an increase in the number of children in our school system, and an increase in the poverty, and an increase in many of the needed parts. And then we look on the other side of the city, and we're looking at an increase in market rate housing, and an increase, some of the stuff that goes towards a community that's rising. But as we listen to the school committee figures, it sounds like it's on the other side. So it's sort of a little bit of a disconnect in my head that I can't make that connection. But, I mean, the numbers don't lie. You guys see them, and I don't want to argue them, but I just, I don't understand how we can get two different competing numbers on that.
So we've tripled Second Language Learners, threefold in three years.
It's amazing.
This last week was the first time in Fall River Public Schools' history that we are now a majority-minority school system, and we flipped from 52-48 to 48-52. The largest percentage of our second language speakers are now Latino, most coming from Puerto Rico. But we are receiving also large numbers of kids from Central and South America as well. So it's very, and you'll see this in Gateway Cities, we call it the churn rates, families move, you know. We have over 1,000 kids in this school system that are considered McKinney-Ventworth. 10%? Yeah, about 1,000.
10% around McKinney-Ventworth.
Yeah, so you see the fluctuation between, you know, I call it the triangle, where Brockton, Taunton, Bedford, Fall River, and families moving and churning throughout. And that's the reality of, and if you look at the other schools, both the Charters, the Regional Vocational, and the Parochial, the demographics are very different than ours.
Most of my questions have been answered. I mean, I'm a little bit, sitting here, a little bit, this is very different this year with what we're going through. The timing of this and the unknowns that we're going forward with is concerning. But I'm sure we can get through this, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but it just seems like it's a different environment that we're talking about. And I'm concerned about not only this budget, but future budgets, and making sure that we can sustain what we're doing. And I'm very concerned about that sustainability going forward. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat five, Council Vice President LaBeau.
Thank you. A few of my questions have been answered. I just wanted to get back to the averages on the salaries versus the actuals. Is there a place in the front where the actuals are that gives the total per school? So just go through and add up the totals of each number?
Yes.
We got a total salary line up. There's a total salary line. So if you add up all the salaries throughout the entire district, you'll have a total salary line.
I was just wanting to compare the.
In terms of breaking it out per school?
Yeah, I just wanted to compare, so say you said Durfee was 15 million, or whatever the number was, and if I go in here, it's broken down by a budget number, I guess I would call it, but it's not, there's not a whole total.
83% of its salaries, and then the other 17% is operating and other.
I just wanted to compare the two. That's fine. The second question I had, we had touched on classroom sizes. In the budget in the past, all the classroom sizes have been in here, but in this year's budget, some of the schools, particularly the elementary is what I was looking at, don't have their classroom sizes. Can we get those?
Yeah, I can provide that.
Okay. Like, off the top of my head, Tanzi, I think, Doran.
We'll provide the last month's report.
Do you have it for all of K through 12?
Yep.
Could we see that?
Class size gets a little.
The high school.
Yeah, that's like weeds, because it's, you have electives and core subjects, or you see the fluctuation, and then some of them are.
Core subjects.
Team taught. Yeah, but we can definitely provide that. It might not make sense to you, so once you get it, your questions, call me.
Okay, great.
But that's information that's administration shares with the school committee on a monthly basis. So we see the class sizes fluctuate throughout the school year, right through the district.
I just know that in past budgets, especially where the emphasis was on reducing classes at the elementary school, in those grades, specific grades, they were.
K through three.
Yeah, and they were in here, but it's not in this year's.
Okay.
I know on the 70 new positions, all those, all new positions, I think you said this earlier, some of those, you're changing positions, correct?
No, the conversions are on the second page.
Okay. So they're not all 70 new, some are conversions?
No, those are, but some are positions that we've moved off of grants into the operating budget. And there's five of those. So it's 65 new positions. And then in terms of conversions, it looks like we're 13 conversions. And then, I'll give you an example, again, like Henry Lord, they don't need the fourth grade teacher, but they need a third grade teacher. So that teacher moves, and we call that a conversion.
Okay. And how many pairs did you say? New pairs?
Proposed 28.
And how do you decide where those go?
Well, some are based on needs of buildings, and then we also assigned one para to each building of the 16 to provide more support for some of the things that we mentioned around ed plans, but also really just about additional support in classrooms.
So you have like a floating para?
No, well, I don't, I wouldn't.
Per building?
I wouldn't call it floating because if they're assigned to a building, they're going to meet whatever need that the school has. So it could be, we want to do more interventions in second grade and fourth grade, it'll be assigned to the second grade.
But could that change for that person throughout the year?
Yes.
They could still, they would say it's Spencer Ward, and but they could change.
Yeah, they're not leaving school. So those would be assigned to each school. One under that.
But their duty within the school could change.
Yes.
Throughout the year. In terms of the salaries for pairs, I know that this is a union issue, but we have some great pairs, and sometimes pairs can absolutely save a classroom from being completely disrupted. And the salaries are incredibly low. I know that those are union negotiations, but for $20,000, I mean, you can't live on a pair of salary, and I would hate to see us lose pairs or the quality of the applicants to not stay at the level it's at just because of the low salary.
Yeah, we're wrapping up contract negotiations now, so.
Just my two cents.
But we've addressed that.
Yeah.
You have.
We have addressed it. We're not getting too deep into it.
Okay. I see it with my kids in school. Sometimes there's, if there's a classroom that doesn't have a para, and there's even just one kid that's having an off day, it can wipe out, you know, the entire period of learning for the whole rest of the class. Where if there is a para, the para can either step in and help with that student, or they can step in and help while the teacher addresses the issue. Either way, it might work for them, but that's good news. As for the transportation, I know that we rescinded, and we're going out, you just went out for a new bid. Do you know when we'll have those answers?
The bids will be due July 11th, if I'm not mistaken.
And then do you just, what is the process? Do you, are we in any danger of not being ready for the beginning of the school year, having to go out?
If that schedule stays exactly where it is, we would be looking to have all the awards in hand for August 1, after we do the due diligence, and then the process of getting contracts around for signatures. So we're looking to have everything ready by August 1.
And then is the school starting early again, before Labor Day?
It is.
It is. And then I know that you also voted on school times. However, was there then another vote, and some of those changes were changed back?
Yes.
Um.
We've just posted, we've had it posted since the meeting on the, yeah, but they have posted today on the, the new start times are posted.
Okay, so everything is up to date?
Yes.
And the two that were moved back were Spencer Ward and Durfee, and that was because us moving them to get the tiering was too close together. And you know what it's like at Spencer Ward and when Durfee's dismissing at the same time, especially with the construction and the loss of the parking lot. So we're going to go back and look at Durfee in two years, but for right now, they're back to their original times, and we have the split between the two.
Okay.
And we also adjusted, the committee did the best they could, and they adjusted Doran's start time, so it's 13 minutes earlier than the first vote. So that's, the gap is not as wide.
And as far as the busing times, times children on bus, I know that we spoke about this, and it's, what is the max time they can be on the bus?
One hour.
One hour, 60 minutes total?
Yes.
And did any of, so Sylvia didn't change their times, correct?
No.
So I know some of the Gate kids are picked up at, to answer Counselor in seat six's question, picked up at 6:30 in the morning to get to school for 7:25. So, and those are fourth graders. Is that going to be addressed at all in the transportation? 6:30 in the morning for?
Only if those students are going to be on those newer routes. So if they're going to be on a 7D route up in the reservation, then it will be adjusted. They will be getting, they will be starting, they will be standing for that bus stop a lot later, not a lot later, but probably move seven to 10 minutes.
So 6:40 instead of 6:30?
The other option, and I hate to say this, but unfortunately, because of the neighborhood school process that we try to adhere to, the reservation is Sylvia. But Sylvia's in ELT schools, so it's starting earlier. So if those students who are going to, Sylvia went to Spencer Ward, and they'd be starting an hour later.
But if they were to get into the Gate program, then?
The Gate program, yeah, the Gate program is totally different. But if they weren't Gate program students, they would be an hour later, so they'd be standing at seven, you know, 7:30 instead of 6:30. So it's, part of it is a product of the school that they're attending, that it is one of the earliest schools. We have three that are starting that early in the morning.
What are the other two?
We have CUS starts at 7:10, and Green, which is 7:35 also, if I'm not mistaken.
There's also, there's also going to be discussions about changing the Gate program and the concept the way we have it currently. Gate may not exist in the future in just those schools. There may be programs embedded.
In each school?
In multiple schools. So it'll sort of hopefully alleviate some of that, and offer, or expand the offerings that we have or available to people now.
And that wouldn't, I feel like it almost skews the numbers of some of the schools too, when you take, you know, the best kids out of some schools and move them all to one school.
We're, so this coming year, there's two major presentations we'll be bringing forward of the school committee. One is Gate, and the other is Extended Learning Time. And those are two areas that we're going to bring forward, both data and then some recommendations for the committee to deliberate as to where we go moving forward.
Good. I believe those are all of my questions for now. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. In seat one, Counselor Cadine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we talked about insurance, just my own two cents, I don't know from the city standpoint that we want to kick over health insurance over to the schools just for control purposes. You know, if you're short a million dollars, and then it gets spent on non-eligible net school spending, then you're short on net school spending and have just lost a million dollars to other non-net school spending eligible costs. Not saying that that would take place, that's just my own personal belief. But just to get back quickly in terms of being at 100% of the governor's numbers and your request at 101, and I think you folks are not really pushing to get to the 101 because of some additional funding coming in from the state based on the conference committee. But depending on how that all shakes out, what are you looking to cut? What would you cut from your proposed budget?
Well, I'd be bringing forward the committee recommendations along many of the new positions that we created, plus some of the line items that we built up around technology contingency, preventative maintenance, operations contingency, things that don't touch kids that we've built up. But I'd bring forward those recommendations, and, you know, we'd definitely lose at least the 16 pairs, and I'm putting one in each building is our recommendation, and that would probably get me closer to 100% of the governor's number. And these are all prepared, these aren't real people right now because none of the positions have been hired. But if I've been unclear in any way, I wanted to reassure you that I am arguing for my original request, which was 101% of House 1, the governor's budget, which is 160 million that I've asked for.
Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. I think we're pretty fortunate for the state that gave us, what, 9.7 million?
In one year, yes, sir.
Yeah. And, you know, you say you created 70 new jobs, that's all well and good. But do we maintain these people if we don't get the 9.7 next year, or are they getting pink slips?
Well, the way the Chapter 70 formula works, with everything that's happened on the Hill, we expect us, given our demographics and our weightings of the formula, and the nuances in the formula, that that figure will probably be more the norm than non-the norm moving forward for several years, given how the cycle will be. Both the House, well, both, all three bills on the Hill right now, the governors, Senator James Diaz, and then there's one other, all of them have essentially a seven-year progression to get to, which is about a $1.4 billion increase to education across the Commonwealth. Just yesterday, if you've read the news from Mass Budget, Fall River stands to gain, I believe it was something like 70 million, if they go with the Senator James bill, over the next seven years. That's how much we're underfunded in education, not you guys, us, but just in general based on the 93 formula. So the Gateway Cities have been taken in the teeth for many, many years. I'm anticipating, you know, if there are cuts down the road, of course, we will be, you know, we'll bring forward a spot in budget, and we'll do our best to protect people first. And, you know, if there's nothing worse, you're absolutely right. And all you guys that were doing this back in the George Bush era when it started, and then Obama, when we did the cuts, that, you know, a couple million dollars is a lot. I did two consecutive years of $10 million cuts when I was Superintendent Brockton. So I get it, there's nothing worse. And that's why, since then, I've been bringing forward very responsible budgets, because I never want to go through that again. And, you know, everything we request to the committee is within reason. know, everything we request and, to the committee is within reason and not within pie in the sky, which is the old way of thinking about budgeting. And we're very disciplined in, in that approach now.
So you think next year, the 9.7 will be there?
Well, I, 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 it might not be 9.7, but let's say it's, it's only five. My budget won't increase by 9.7 this, this following year. But I will say that if we get the, something's gonna happen on the Hill. Right now, the, the, you know, they're debating this bill, whether the bill gets done in this fiscal year, which I don't think it will, but most likely this summer. I think we're, we're, we'll be in a good place overall moving forward.
That includes charter as well.
Yes. Yeah, that 9.7, I just wanted to also be clear.
Right.
That includes all the charter tuitions as well and all the things that are included in our overarching foundation budget. So.
It's not only 70 jobs.
It's not just 9.7 for, for Fall River Public Schools.
All right. The 10.1, if we leave it the way it is and we vote to give the kind, you guys voted in that we're gonna support the budget and you go out and they want more money, more than 10.1, what happens then if you guys need another half a million? And we already voted for 10.1.
So at the end of the day, I think the committee, we've all been very clear that that's an unknown. We did the best we could do to strip down the bid. And we feel, and believe me, Herculean efforts on behalf of Ken Pacheco and his team. We have the tiering in place, the school committee voted on, and that's very much appreciative and those are tough votes to take. The way the routes have been done, the way that the bid specs went out, we anticipate to come in lower than 11.9. But I, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't say it's definitely gonna be 10.1. But at the end of the day, there's a conversation that we all have to have and say, here's the reality. We're gonna know what that reality is in, in July 11th, about what that figure is. And hopefully, we're as close to the, that cost as soon as possible.
All right. So the question is, if it's a half a million dollars over, we're gonna pay? Is it on your side?
Well, on the law, it's on your side of the ledger. But we're gonna work with you.
All right. All right. And, you know, as my president of the council brought it up, the 87 that they get in the actual monies don't match. All well and good. That's the way you do things. That's good. Well, why even separate it and why not put it on the same page? I mean, it's like you're trying to hide something. You're making 87. Well, we got the yellow page here. Well, the actual actually is whatever it is, 83, you know. So he got calls, other people got calls. I didn't get no calls on it. So, but if, you know, if I'm supposed to get 240 an hour and then my boss says you're only getting 100, I mean, $1.90, he said, hey, you're shortchanging me. They feel that they're getting shortchanged. But no, I understand the short process. All well and good. I just wanna say, you should have been maybe on the same page. It would've been much easier with no problems.
We can definitely clean that up for next year in terms of how we do our presentation.
Okay. And another thing, this thing is.
We can add, we can, we're gonna present the budget the way we do it, but we can add ways to make it more clear for other people that aren't as intricately involved in our process. That's, that's the bottom line.
All right. I gotta say, there's a very difficult budget to follow. And I'll tell you why.
Why?
Because, you know, you went for the, the 87, you gotta look for the thing on over here. You say, well, it's over there. It's this page and this page. Well, what's the matter? You know, we got a budget in Fall River. And I can say to the president, I wanna go to page 73. It says that Leo Pelletier is not gonna get paid. Page 73. You guys got no numbers at all. No numbers at all.
To fake you out.
Huh?
To fake you out.
Don't go there. Don't go there. Don't go there.
I'm kidding, Mr. Pelletier.
No, no, really, really. Look, it's hard to, because you say it's this, go to this page, it's the back of this. Oh, that's baloney. Let's do it right. Are we wrong putting the numbers?
No, we can, we can certainly tab it by schools, by, we can tab it by schools and we can also tab it by number next year.
Yes.
Again, I'll reiterate for the council, my reluctance, and as one person, I've advocated for this for years, of not combining the actual salaries with the person for budgetary purposes until the budget is finalized. Once the budget's finalized, the budget comes out, the names and the total salaries are, are there for transparent. Anybody can look that up. Prior to that final approval, if the committee has to take decisions on which positions to cut, it then gets attributed to who the person is, not whether or not that position is needed. It becomes politicized and it's an ugly process. I've been a part of it. I've seen votes reconsidered in the same meeting because of the individual. I'm telling you, it's not a process that's, that's something that we wanna go about. The council doesn't have to take votes to eliminate positions within your budget. The school committee does.
Yeah.
So we have line-by-line authority in our budget. So if, if the superintendent says, I gotta cut three people at the high school, I rather cut three FTEs for an average salary of whatever that's gonna be, rather than say it's gonna be Leo, it's gonna be Mr. Long, and it's gonna be Miss Liberty LeBeau. So that's the reason why we do it. I understand it's, it's, I understand your, your confusion in it, but I'm just explaining the process is done that way until it's finalized and then that tab in the front gets merged with the other tabs. So you have the name of the person, where they work and what they're making. But not until the budget's finalized, because again, when we're tasked with having to make cuts, those names are in front of you. And if it's your neighbor and you're gonna take an up or down vote, it may sway your vote. It shouldn't. But I'm telling you, I've been a part of committees where that's taking place. It's not comfortable. Since that point, I've advocated each year that the committee have the averages, the positions and the location of the job, and that the other information be put there for informational purposes so you and others can look at it and see exactly what that person earns.
I believe that's probably the right way to do it. It's just hard to follow.
No, I understand.
You go to this page, to this page, and that's it. Because you're not laying anybody off. You're just taking a little bit off them and that's it. And nobody gets laid off. So that's good. Because if it was the other way, we'd be getting calls too. Hey, my cousin's not working. He's gonna get laid off. What can you do? Then I gotta call you guys up. So it makes it a little easier, you know? So with that, I'm certainly gonna support this. I'm hoping everything works out for everybody. And the only other thing I got is with the changes of the bus schedules and everything else, I had a few people talk to me, you know, it doesn't make sense that they're gonna leave five minutes before the other school and there's be congestion down the North End or Ellsbury School and everything. You guys find that a big problem?
We fix that, we fix that issue. That was the Spencer Board and Durfee issue. We have that separation spread back. But tiering is very complicated. If you think about it, we're now at a place where we're gonna have one bus essentially do what three buses used to do. And that's where the savings in transportation comes from. Because prior to this year, we have a, a system that was individualized. And we're big enough that we should have tiering in order to keep the costs down and, and utilize resources to the extent possible. So it, schools have to move times in order to get that tiering with about 40-minute split between building sites. If we can get them in the same area, we've been able to accomplish that. And we're gonna get better at that as the year moves forward. And next year, we'll probably even have more ability to have better tiering once we learn from it the first year.
After the first couple of weeks, school starts next year. And if there's a major problem, what are you doing?
What am I gonna do?
Yeah, try to rectify it or?
We'll fix it. This is what we do. We deal in crisis, we solve problems and we do it professionally responsibly. And we, we appreciate the feedback when people have something that they see not, not working for them.
Yeah. So I would know what they would call you as well.
What do they do?
Yeah, I believe that. With that, Mr. President, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council on Seat 2, Counselor Kamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Costa, I appreciate your explanation of what happened way back when. I think some of those videotapes are still available and you can see it for themselves if they like. It was bad.
It was.
It was really bad. And I think the Department of Secondary Education even sent everyone a letter saying how to perform the meetings and what to do and what not to do and.
It was part of our recovery plan.
Yes. So, and I wasn't, when you say.
I still have those scars.
I'm sure you do. I can see them.
I, so, again, I understand, I, I understand the concerns. I just offer the explanation as to why we do it.
And I know exactly why it happens. And it's unfortunate that you people are in that situation where you let politicians get involved in making tough decisions. We here have to make tough decisions. And you're right, we don't have to fine tune it to the actual individual, but we have to lay people off at times and do stuff. And we, as you said, it's not our job to lay off or hire. We just make the decision monetarily and then that, everything else gets adjusted. The school department budget is probably the most difficult budget to get your hands around because Mr. Almeida can tell you, more people change positions prior to the school year, during the school year, right after the school year than any other department in the city. There's people just jumping around, seeing what's available, seeing who's retiring, who's leaving. As you said, fourth grade teacher's leaving inside the building, a sixth grade teacher wants to go there. They jump around. It's, it's very difficult. So I give you a lot of credit. But I do chuckle because for years, we've been trying to get the names put with the salary amounts that were accurate. Now we have the names, but you change the salary amount, so it's still not accurate. And it's just funny how, you know, before we never got the names, but we got the right amounts. Now we get the right names, but we get the wrong amount. So we're back to square one. But Mr. Costa said it before, he's right. We appropriate the final dollar amount and that's what we vote on. And we put our faith in you to make the decisions curriculum-wise, who to hire, what to do, direction of going. And that's our job here. So I've always supported education. I'll continue to always support education. And I think that that's something that we can do. Anything we can do for you, just let us know what we can do. But that's our job. As far as having more Spanish-speaking children in the school system, are we looking to hire more Spanish-speaking teachers and guidance counselors as well? I know it's not an easy task to do, but.
Yeah, we've been doing our best to increase the number of translators and assessment folks that are bilingual, multilingual is what the current term is. And, you know, that, that area of the budget has grown substantially over the last couple of years. And we continue to, to look at and recruit and try to find second language speakers, particularly with paras, especially like the 101 paras with special needs students who are both special needs but also foundation English language learner, because that communication with the home and the parent, between the home and the school is so important, especially if we have a, a student that's non-verbal. So.
Does a para make more money? She speaks two languages or he speaks two languages?
Right now, the answer's no, but we prioritize in hiring in terms of the postings and prefer qualifications.
We also have the parent outreach workers that are working for the district that are, you know, multilingual to assist with schools where there's a higher population of English, you know, as a second language, which we have now. I think we have.
About 17, 7 of those positions?
Right.
Four.
Four. I think it's four. Four positions where we have the parent outreach workers. So they're working specifically with schools and families who, parents may not speak English and to help acclimate them to the school and to reach out, provide supportive services.
And I also like the fact they're looking to make improvements in the egress, the Soviet School and Henry Lord School. They're gonna put some roads in there and, which is a good idea. Those are very heavily congested and it's a good idea. Has that been approved by the city already?
So we have a design approval.
Design.
Yeah, we're, we're in the preliminary stages, but we have design approval. We're working on design.
Preliminary design or final design?
No, we're working on schematic designs. Again, dollar amounts, you know, part of, part of the, the insurance proceed, num money. We are using that to do that preliminary schematic designs in Spencer Board, I'm sorry, in Sylvia and Henry Lord and also the parking lot drainage improvements at Talbot. It's all part of that.
Well, those two areas there, you don't have to do any replication of wetlands in those areas. A lot of wetlands.
Very small area. Very, very small in both, yes. But we have, we have, on the property in both, we have the ability to replicate.
Conservation already approved, the replication?
No, no, no. We are in that process.
So they haven't approved it?
Preliminary look at property and walkthroughs has shown that we do have the ability to do that.
To replicate?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, a good size school, a good size area, so you probably should.
We have four retention ponds at Sylvia already, which are, have the capability of, of, you know, doubling its size, so.
Right. Cause you know, it's good. Cause the vegetation is what determines what.
Exactly.
Replicated, not just whether it's wet enough.
Right, right.
Typical vegetation that's there, so. That's good. So I, I'm, listen, I'm all on board. I hope you can get as much as possible. I hope, you know, we wanna just continue to support our schools and our students and the teachers and give them the tools they need to get a job. Then I'm all for it 100%. Good luck to you. Good job putting it together. I know it's not easy. I really appreciate the work that Kevin does and the school community members as well. And I know some of you have been at it at a long time, but I just wanna thank what you're doing. With that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council on Council on Seat 3, Counselor Kamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. And welcome to a good team that's putting together a good budget. Unfortunately, I, I feel the budget is woefully inadequate for the needs of our community. It should be significantly higher in terms of meeting the needs of our community. I ask, and I assume the superintendent would be the best person to answer this. What is, what is the best, what are the, what communities in Massachusetts are getting the highest school spending? I, I understand it's up to 130%.
Cambridge is the highest in the Commonwealth.
And what is their percentage?
I believe it's upwards of 200% in that school spending. And that's based on a whole host of factors, but most of which is, the real issue in communities is the, what they call the relative wealth factor of the homeowner, the property values, and then the commercial tax base. Most of your gateway cities and then your former industrial hubs, places like Douglas and Orange Mass are, because of the industries have gone, just like in Fall River and Lowell and places like that, Brockton, the commercial base is not once, it's not what it once was. And those properties don't have the value that they had when they were producing textiles. So you see what's happening is that the gateway cities can't afford to go above. Now, the 1993 court case established a floor called a foundation. It got everyone at the time, no one was at a foundation. So it was a very forward-thinking, progressive bill that was passed in 93. Since then, and the reason why there's three bills passing, well, three bills on the Hill and then one suit and then two potential suits to follow, is because that, that funding, that funding formula has not been looked at since 1993. And there was a report in 2015 that recommended changing the weighting, but the House and the Senate really haven't come to agreement on, on, on what those weightings should be. They've made some marginal changes and we're appreciative of that, but they haven't fully implemented the reforms. So it's, it's very difficult to answer your question in terms of what is a, a good system look like. Because there are communities, you know, where, where, you know, 80.42% of our budget is state dollars. Whereas there's other communities that 95% of their budgets are local dollars. And this is where the problem on the Hill happens in terms of coming to compromises towards something to be. Since 1993, there's never been any adjustment made to second language learner weighting.
Health insurance.
Health insurance, special education, and students living in poverty. And those areas are really where a place like Fall River is gonna see tremendous benefit if we change the weighting. And, and that's right now is what's being deliberated in terms of what's the end result will be.
So, you know, it's clear and, and the people of our community should realize that as we advocate for more money for our school department budget, it's because of the reality that we're living in a Commonwealth where there's such gross inequality for one community to be able to provide 200% of net school spending and then many communities to provide significantly higher than 100% of net school spending. And then at the other end of the, and Fall River, Springfield and New Bedford are struggling to, to get to 100% or even 101%. And with Springfield and New Bedford, they're, as you stated earlier, below 100%. So that social injustice, that economic injustice is, is pervasive throughout the Commonwealth. And for our legislators, and with all due respect to our own legislators, because they do advocate for our needs, but the vast majority of the legislature and the administration continue to have to, because of the political consequences, to respond to these communities that are, have a greater property tax base and can therefore meet a higher budget. Now, I'm the third person of this council that has served on the school committee. In my tenure on the school committee, we had fiscal autonomy. So that when the school committee made a decision about what their budget should be, that was the end of it. There was. There was no one that could reduce that amount. That was established as fiscal autonomy by the school committee. It was, in many ways, a better system, because no one knows better as an elected body than the school committee as to what the needs are of our community. Subsequent and within the first term, or only term, my four-year term on the school committee, we went from having fiscal autonomy to not having fiscal autonomy, and then came the effort to recognize that inequality, but never has the Commonwealth reached the point of doing the right thing by poorer communities. And that's really a gross injustice to the kids in Fall River, because no child should be able to get an education based on a zip code, and that's what's happening now. Depending on what zip code a child lives in is dependent upon what kind of funding he's going to get for his or her school, and that's injust, unjust. So, you know, I, I know that there's, and maybe you can update me, there were a couple of things happening in the Commonwealth. One is this foundation budget, but I was happy to see recently that the Constitutional Convention has ruled that the, the million, so-called millionaire's tax is, is coming back. It was, I believe, overruled by the SJC because it had specified that the money that would come from that tax would go to transportation and education, two very, very much needed entities of governing, transportation and education, that need additional funding. So can you enlighten us a little bit on, on both the buzz around the foundation budget and also what we might see if in fact this millionaire's tax, tax should be implemented in the Commonwealth and what that might do to help address the injustice that exists currently?
There's, there's three bills on the Hill to implement the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations, which came out in 2015. One bill, the Senate bill, is much more progressive than the governor's bill. There's a third bill that leaves the numbers blank, but everyone, right now, through conference, they're trying to get an answer as to what folks can live with. I know the millionaire's tax is something that you have to attach a revenue source to any new increases in funding. But subsequent to that, at the same time, there's one coalition that filed suit last week, that's the MTA and NAACP and a couple other organizations filed a suit similar to the suit that was filed in Brockton in 90, in the early 90s, to change the foundation formula. So there's pressure both on the Hill legislatively through the court, legally through the court, legislatively through the bills, and then through the ground swell of public support. We think that this is the best year ever to get something done on Chapter 70, which everyone agrees, even the governor has said, the time has come to do something, it's just a mechanism to do it. Fall River will benefit from that, as I said, on the high end, we're, on the high end, we're looking at something like $70 million additional to Fall River through Chapter 70 over the next seven years if the Senate bill comes through. You know, our union president, the Teachers Union President, Rebecca Kusick, has really been a trailblazer at the state level, leading for all. You'll see several of our families have gotten involved. There was an article actually in Saturday's Boston Globe that featured our family speaking to, on the Hill regarding the need to, to fix the funding formula now. We've, you know, since the recommendations came out in 2015, now, that's, that's a whole high school that's already graduated. Think about the reality of that. So we know that second language kids cost more to educate. We know that kids from poverty have all sorts of other needs that aren't being met. Do you know that the school committee just last week voted to go to free lunch and breakfast for every single person in, in the, in the district, because we qualify for that, totally subsidized by the federal, federal government? So we know the needs, kids need to come to school, need to be clothed, which we provide if needed, they need to be safe, which we do a really good job with our, with our SEL team, and then educated, of course, through this, you know, classroom magic that we do. It's not magic, it's actually science, but with a little art to it, what, what happens in the classroom with our teachers and our parents. So we're hopeful that we'll get to a place where, you know, the floor is no longer 100%, the floor is 103%, and then we can start changing the context of what it is. But you're absolutely right, I mean, you, you're talking about economic injustice, but there's people in other communities that will say the opposite and say, well, why are we subsidizing the education of kids in Fall River and Brockton and other places? And, and, and the Chapter 70 formula on its merits is a really good formula, we just got to get the metrics and the weighting right.
So that's the, I guess, the light at the end of the tunnel, is that things are moving in a better direction, but there needs to be an understanding, and I think that those who basically say Fall River needs to basically pull itself up by its bootstraps, well, that's fine if you have some boots to wear. But the reality is that so many people are lacking in basic needs in this community, and that's just a reality of the way cities are, and the way particularly gateway cities are, that they were often the, the, the places where first-generation people are, where poor people are, and, you know, I have no misgivings about what we get from the state and off federal governments, because I think both owe working communities such as Fall River a, a higher level of commitment because of what we provide to the, to the state and what we provide to the country. This is, this, these, we Fall Riverites have put our blood, sweat, and tears and lives on the line, and to, to a greater extent than wealthier communities, and we need to be, it needs to be recognized that, that what comes to us comes to us because it's rightfully received. And talking about rightfully received, when I was a school committee member, we were volunteers, we didn't get paid. And when I first came out to the city council in 1982, the first thing when addressing the city council and the mayor's salaries was that the school committee should be paid as well. And so fortunately, that city council back in 1982 agreed and provided the school committee members with a $5,000 salary, if you will, it's almost silly to call it a salary, but it was a five, $5,000, recognizing at least from a community that we appreciate the work that you do. Where do I find in the, in your budget what the school committee income is, or the school committee budget is? Where, I was looking for it, I haven't found it, where is it?
It's got its own tab, right? Towards the back, I believe, it's got its own tab, it should say school committee.
The very small tab, I would have guessed.
It's also, well, don't get me going, I won't go there.
So it's in the...
Is it under departments?
No, yeah, and it says school committee, right before security maintenance.
So there should be like a green sheet separating a couple of different departments in the back?
Oh, I see, it's one of the green sheets?
It separates some of those departments in the back.
It will say school committee right on the green sheet.
I wish you'd make the print a little bit smaller, because that way...
Yeah, I can't see it in it either.
Okay, I'm not seeing it. I see athletics, curriculum.
What does it come at?
Help me.
Before security.
It's before security and maintenance.
Right before security maintenance.
Well...
Keep going, yep.
Before security and maintenance.
Yep, you're in the right section, I can see it from, well...
You can see, I didn't see it, okay. Okay, so where, you folks are at a $7100. So let me say that, I, you know, I, I love this council, and I, and I love all of you that do public service, you know, but unfortunately, I think it was about 10 or 12 years ago that the council, in its wisdom, or maybe it was lack of wisdom at the time, decided to freeze all elected officials' salaries. And, and I know, and I would ask the superintendent, you know, maybe to do a little research for me and see what other school committee members are getting in comparable cities around the Commonwealth, but I think the time has come for us to talk about the injustice of having a salary frozen for now about a dozen years. And my question is, if we, and I'm going to ask the city side of things to, to also take a look at this, if we in fact reverse that freeze of 12 years ago, or approximately 12 years ago, and instituted a just basic cost of living increase, what would it cost the school department to do that? And could they absorb that cost within its existing budget, or would they need to ask for supplementary funding to do that? And I don't know if that's something the city side would have to do initially, because it was established, the, the ordinance change was, was done through a vote of the city council, the school committee didn't vote for this. So what would be the process and, and how could we implement that process? It wouldn't be for this council, I want to emphasize that, any change that would occur would occur for a future council or a future school committee or a future mayor. But what can we do to correct this injustice? Mrs. Sahadi, can you, or Mr. Superintendent?
I could just, I could easily contact the School Committee Association and get from them which districts have paid positions.
Yeah, I, I'm sure it would amount to no more than $3,000 or something. It's, it's minimum in terms of $160 million budget. But I think, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's right, you know, we, we are now facing, I think, more so than any time in my life, a dearth of people interested in running for public office. When I first ran, 30, 30-some people ran for city council, school committee, 20-some people ran for school committee. And that serves the community well when you have that high level of energy. And I, and I know it's not being done for the money, first and foremost, but let's, let's do what's right by those who are serving in public office and at least recognize their service by, by providing them with a reasonable reimbursement for all the expenses and, and everything else that we do. So what do we do, what do we need to do, Mr. Sahadi and Superintendent Malone, what do we need to do to make that happen?
Well, I believe we'd need a charter change as far as the salaries themselves. As Mr. Malone just said, we can reach out to our sister and brother communities and get an idea of what they're, they're paying. If we're looking at just a cost of living increase, we could utilize the ASME contract like we do for any other positions within city government that are not part of the union and make that part of the change.
Where do you see a charter change? Because I, I've been spending a lot of time reading the charter, I don't see the charter dictating a freeze in salaries.
I, I thought at one point, Council, I, I read in the charter that if, if a proposed increase in the stipends for either the school committee or city councils to be proposed, I believe it has to be done in the first year of that two-year cycle, I believe. In other words, to prevent someone on the, on the way out of a term, sort of proposing an increase for, 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 you know, for, for a body. I believe there's some language in there specifically to that, I may be wrong, but...
I will defer it out. Yeah, okay, I, I, I know it's not for existing bodies. In other words, we could not institute a reversal of this freeze for the existing school committee or the existing council or the existing mayor, but I believe it could be implemented for the future school committee, future city council, a future mayor, so.
We can certainly look into it, Council.
Okay, and I would ask that it come back to us during these budget hearings so that we can see if we can, in fact, can act on it this year. Thank you. And with that, Mr. President, I yield.
Thank you, Council of C2, Council of Comer.
Yeah, I think prior to you looking into anything, maybe we should have a vote of this council at some point in time, so that everybody that's giving you something to do is on board with that. I, for one, don't think I would support pay increase for school committee members and city councils, as I supported the pay freeze, pay freeze way back when. I think that what we do here is because we want to do it, not because it's going to pay more money to entice more people to run for office. So that's just how I feel, I think before we start telling department heads to look into things, see what we can change, maybe let's get a rule of the council and see if that's something that we do in fact want to change. I haven't had this conversation with any of my colleagues, I don't know how anyone feels, but I for one don't think I'd be probably supporting that. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further for the schools? Herring, now, thank you very much. Schools, city administration? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to come here tonight. I just want to say one thing. My son's here to watch this thing, and he came all the way from Martha's Vineyard to be able to watch this meeting. This is his first time watching a public government.
Thank you. We're going to recess for five minutes, stretch our legs, and we're going to get right into the budget. We are in recess, thank you. Anyone else come back to order?
Here.
No need to vote? We don't need to vote to come back to order, do we?
No.
Okay, we're back to order. We're going to get back to the municipal budget. Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi is here. We'll ask them for a quick overview, but I'd like to remind the council of a couple of things, what we're going to be doing, just as a reminder of what we did last year. We've broken out tonight into revenue, schools, which has already been completed, administrative services and general government. What we're going to do, we have some department heads who are here right now that have been waiting here. We're going to indicate those specific departments first, then we're going to get into our revenue to get these department heads out here. They had a long day and they have to be here nice and early again tomorrow so that we can respect their time. First, let's go to general government, which is tab 87 in our agenda. When we call these individual department heads, if anybody has questions, we're going to need to make sure that we keep our questions specific to that department. Try not to go into speaking about community maintenance when we're in veterans, et cetera, et cetera, so we can keep this flowing. So first, first tab is general government, page 87 on our, in our budget. Anybody have any questions for the veterans' office, the veterans' agent?
Give me a second.
Yep, I'll give you a minute. No problem.
Page is that?
Be.
The veterans' budget, Counselor, would begin on, or the details of the budget are on 111.
I'll give you all a moment. Any questions for Mr. Hague? We're going to get to you later. Herring, now, thank you, Mr. Hague.
Just one fast question.
Oh, here we go. Councilman C. Setman, Councilor Palatier, Mr. Hague?
Most of the time you return money back to the city, which is a good thing. You doing that this year?
Oh, yes.
And could that be diverted, like, to the wall?
Any.
Any surplus in my budget would go back to the general fund, Counselor.
Oh, we go back to general fund. I figured we have an angle to, I know you still need a lot of money for the wall. If there was, how much money are you giving back this year?
I would say the figures I have now are not year-end, so I'd say maybe $200,000.
$200,000, wow. Mr. Sahadi, is there any way we can divert that money to the wall?
Well, as Mr. Hague just indicated, any turnbacks within the general government or the general fund operating budget go to offset other departments that may have shortfalls as well as snow and ice.
All right, just an attempt to try to.
I'd just like to make a point, Counsel, on the return of the money. This particular budget cycle, we've unfortunately had a lot of our older veterans, World War II, Korea veterans pass away, which lowers our caseload. And as you know, it's 75% reimbursed. So the reason for not spending the money is, number one, we didn't need to in this budget cycle, and number two, if we did try to spend it on something else, we wouldn't get the 75% back and that might affect the cherry sheet going forward, so.
Oh, no problem. Just an idea, that's it. Ain't going to work, it ain't going to work, I tried.
Yeah, but you know what? The city's been very generous towards the Vietnam War and it's doing very, very well. And we should reach our goals. We're going to have a groundbreaking on July 2nd. I think you'll all be notified about that. And it's really, really a good plus for the city of Fall River.
Well, you're doing an excellent job with that, along with everybody at Fall River that's pitching in, having fundraisers here and there. I've been to a few. And I'm glad that we're going to reach the goal and have another nice thing here in the city of Fall River to go see.
It's great.
With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman C. Five, Councilor Vice President LaBeau.
Just a couple of questions. I know that these numbers are through March 31st, so there's still a few more months left. However, the, just under veterans' benefits expenses, for instance, we have the same projection numbers as the revised budget numbers. Are you expecting to get close to those numbers with the last few months left?
Well, there's a few things that are not out of the budget yet. $75,000 for the Pine Street.
I see that, that was my next question.
Mr. Gallagher has been on, spending that. I think he's reached the $75,000 in repairs. He'll be asking us to transfer that on a line item, which we will be doing shortly.
Okay. And as far as any of the other ones where we're asking for the same amount, but they're coming in significantly less, you think the last three months are going to get you closer to what the projected numbers were?
Well, like I said, I'm looking at maybe $200,000, could be a little more after we spend everything down, things that we need to buy. And the budget itself is, I think, about 4% less on the ask part of it, so it'll balance out over that. I mean, these budgets, it, you know, takes a couple of years to balance them out.
Okay. And do you know what that $75,000 was? I'm sure it will come down to us in the line item transfer, but do you know what was done at the vet center?
Yes, I do. This, I have a sheet here. I can leave with Madam Clark and maybe she can give you all a copy.
That'd be great.
But there's three pages of different type of repairs here. And it's about $75,800. And I did bring the invoices of everything that was done.
Just if you have a sheet just on what they've been doing, that would be great. I've been in and out and I've seen them working on different things, but it hasn't formally been in front of us.
Some of the highlights, there's been a lot of electrical done over there, which is service upgrades. Plumbing has been repaired. There's been a lot of work on the boilers and such. There's been masonry work done. The windows have been done, as you know. A lot of paint, a lot of painting's been done. Triangle Refrigeration has done air conditioning work over there, ramps, handicap ramps. I think just about every day of every week in this budget cycle has been some type of work going on at that center.
Great.
So it's come a long way in the last few years and that's close to the credit of this council. And if I remember correctly, it was yourself that started that ball rolling.
They had a lot of issues there, so I'm very happy to see that. And the front walkway work that they're doing now with the front stairs, is that part of that as well?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
That's the handicap ramp.
Okay. All right, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. In seats six, Councilor Malone. You're good?
My questions have been answered, I'm not sorry.
Thank you. Anything further from the council on the veterans', veterans' department? Herring, now, thank you, Mr. Hague.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to go to page 120 in our budget, under Administrative Services, Human Resources, page 120. Human Resources Director is here. If anybody has any questions for Human Resources, I'll give you a moment. Councilman C. One, Councilor Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know that I need the HR Director down, but just looking at, when I was looking at the salary, so page 122, the breakdown of the annual salaries, and you have the 1.5% increase, the 1.5 CPI, gives you a total. The starting salary for the director is $96,253. But if I looked at 19's proposed budget, it was showing $93,268 with a $926 CPI increase and then a $400 longevity bringing that salary to 94,594. So when I look at it, it looks like there's obviously a discrepancy of at least $1,000 or a couple thousand from the 94,594 to the 96,253. So I was just wondering, is there an increase and then plus an additional CPI adjustment and a longevity on top of that?
Just CPI?
No, Counselor, I believe it was just CPI. What I can do for you is I will go to payroll tomorrow and get the specifics. It may have been a typo in one of the budgets. I don't believe it's this one, but.
I think it was a higher percentage last year from January. This 1.5 is projected for next year, Counsel, but I think this past year it was higher.
Okay, so I mean, when you, when you look at FY19's budget and the backup.
I know what you mean.
The total comes out to 94,594 and it just, I would have assumed that you would have just had the same. And then the other individuals, it seems like it was a $400 discrepancy. They're actually getting paid less $400 compared to what was in the budget. And the last two people, so the protech and the HR generalist received $100 less, just comparing the two budgets, so.
Okay. I will check that in the morning and have that answer for you tomorrow evening.
All right, thank you.
Anything further for Human Resources? You yield, Counselor?
I yield, listen.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Thank you very much. You're all set to go. Next person is MIS, page 127 in our budget book. It begins Management Information Services under Administrative Services. Give you a moment? Can I give you a moment? Maybe Mrs. Sahadi, if you could, or the MIS Director who's here, Ms. Lewis, could give us a brief overview. I know this department in prior years has seen a tremendous increase year over year. I know there's been some rollover in police and fire. Ms. Lewis, if you could please come down and maybe give this council a quick overview on where your budget is at at this point, please? Thank you.
While Ms. Lewis is getting ready, what's going on in terms of the MIS budget is twofold. We've got a number of items within the budget that are contractual. So the management or the administrative fees or the maintenance fees for a lot of the softwares continue to increase. In addition, there is a number of items that you'll see that have been reallocated as new account numbers and object codes are established. The MIS department is better tracking the expenditures in a particular area, as well as the city MIS department, as you know, has now taken on the tasks of the police department as well as the fire department. And to some extent, the water and sewer softwares and remote services and email, emails, et cetera. So a lot of that is what drives this particular budget. So, a lot of that is what drives this particular budget and the increases within this budget. But Ms. Lewis would be able to better give you the details.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, as Ms. Sahadi said, we actually have seen an increase in Munis. I believe it was approximately $75,000 increase. Our virtual environment has also increased for licenses, as well as improvements to the virtual environment. We have Windows 10 that we have had to rebuild our virtual environment that will no longer be supported by the end of 2010, I'm sorry, 2019. So, we have seen a lot of increases, and we're also have a couple of software packages that we like to purchase, one being for the fire department called Cruise Sense, which will help them with a manual process at this time, as well as Police is detailed tracking, detailed tracking software, and also IA Pro, which is for forensics. So, we've seen some increases there as well. One of the bigger items that's also come up, at City Hall last year, we converted our email from Zimbra to Exchange for our administration and our department heads, and then what we call Oa, Outlook Web Access. So, we did over 200 accounts last year for Oa, so we saw an increase. Now, Zimbra is being, coming to an end as of August 1st. We just recently migrated the fire department off to a new email system. Once again, it's Exchange and Oa, and we have gotta change the police department by the 1st of August. With that being said, the increase is significant. It went from $4,000 a year for, or approximately $4,000 a year for Zimbra, and we're looking, depending on the mixture of Exchange accounts and Oa accounts, we may be seeing several thousand dollars per month, depending on what the numbers are for those accounts. So, we saw a significant increase in email.
To that point...
To that point, Counselors, too, with the, we are in the process of still trying to determine the police department's ability to be compliant with the Public Records Statute. And there is a possibility that all of the police patrol are gonna have to migrate to a more expensive platform, would be the Exchange platform. Because that's the platform that allows for complete maintenance of all of the former emails that are generated. And the estimate for that transition alone is approximately an additional...
It's like $4,000 a year per month, I'm sorry.
So, $48,000, almost $50,000 additional, just in one department. So, we are reviewing, the Corporation Counsel, Judge Macy is looking at the Public Records Statute to determine if that's a requirement at that level. But again, it's a combination of trying to accommodate public records as well as the new email server. So, again, that's a substantial increase that has been included in the budget because we weren't certain. But it's very likely that we may have to migrate to that, so it's a very large single increase.
Anything further from the counsel on this? Counsel in seat one, Counsel Le Kadim.
I apologize if you went over this, just my notes are all over the place, so... So, page 128, so we have telephones, so the cellular telephones went up roughly about 15K. So, is that just added cost associated with the number of phones we have? Do we add number of phones, or is that...
Our number of cell phones increase and decrease depending on if we're adding new departments. It has increased to a point because now we're adding, for some of the departments, they now have tablets, code enforcement and facilities maintenance. What we've done is, in that case, we've tried to offset some of the costs because they have service plans with them. So, we've taken on approximately, let's say, per item is $50 per item, per month for the plan. So, what we've tried to do is, if they need, still need a phone, give them a reduced plan and go from an iPhone to a flip phone.
Okay.
So, that's how we've offset some of the money. We've also have kept on top of if they, we do not need to do, have people have telephones, we've reduced the costs there. We are right now, Counselor, looking into, we have a big undertaking going on right now, is we're going through all the cells, all the, excuse me, all the landlines right now in the building. We've already made a pass for private numbers last year, as well as we have reduced the numbers. We are looking at roughly anywhere from 100 or more lines that we are gonna, hopefully can kill at this point in time, within the next few months, so you should see reduction in landlines.
Okay, so the, but the cell phones or cell, does that include, the air codes are not in there, like for the police department and the fire department, so for their equipment?
It is part of the service plan for the...
So, it's part of the...
It's mixed in, yes.
Is it part of the telecommunications, or is it...
When we talk about wireless, it's part of the wireless numbers. And then, we have call boxes, which is the rail trail, which we picked up a little over a year ago, I believe it was.
And that would be listed under the...
They're separate, well, I'm working from a different spreadsheet. That's all part of the wireless service.
Okay.
That should be under there.
All right. And then, the telecommunications portion, obviously, that was another, looks like another 40,000.
Telecommunications could be...
The only problem is, it's the same note as last year, so I was trying to figure out what the difference or the increase would be.
Telecommunications could be the fiber, as well as we do business, it's called Comcast, it's part of Comcast. We have fiber and we have business accounts.
Yep.
And they do ones for external, the businesses such as the cemetery, parks department, external venues versus here.
But why the $40,000 increase? What's the...
Just for the fact that the services have gone up, and we've added additional lines to the fiber, and we also did a high fiber between the fire department and the police department this year, which is an additional cost because it's quicker.
So, when you say high fiber, it's...
We do a fiber line. It was, we went to a gig, I think, is a service between the fiber, between the fire and police. And that was done several months back. That was a big undertaking that we accomplished.
Okay.
Yeah, T Department.
And the next line down, just on the technical consulting services, so we've got 36,000 going to 90,000. I see you've got the RDM from Munis, you've got the 16-2, which was a slight increase for the Tyler. Is that online permitting, is that what that...
That's online permitting.
The online permitting piece. The 60K for MTIS, is that the consultants that we have?
That is, yes. We have part-time services with MTSI that come here, that assist us on a part-time basis, weekly.
So, where, was that built into this budget previously, or it looks like it was added in?
Yes, Counselor, it technically was in the budget, but in the prior year, it was in as a salary line item, so we had an additional vacant position. But that vacant position has not been able to be filled, so we moved it into the consulting line item because more likely than not, MTIS will continue their work here at the city.
Okay. So, then I, I think I see where, when you get to the hosting services, that you eliminated the hosting line and then actually just kind of broke out what you're actually hosting, but it seems like it was a significant increase. So, is it solely the email that you were just talking about, the requirement for the hosting? Is that the biggest...
That's probably, yeah. That's definitely the email, that's increased.
So, that's the...
As well as the website. We've been running with the website for about a year and a half, so we saw a little increase with the website as well. But the most of it is the email hosting and archiving.
Okay. And then, the software varies on page 130. So, you've got a 64,000 dollar increase.
That's Munis, Munis said going up.
Is that solely Munis?
No, Counsel, that primarily is the police and fire software. So, I have a list that...
When you say software, is it ICMA or, I mean, ICM?
It's...
IMC, sorry, I get confused with all my...
It's actually a laundry list of softwares that are purchased by the individual departments. So, for example, police has detailed tracking system, and IA Pro, that's 22,000, performed software support, 49,000, and Lexus, 5,000. I mean, I've got the list if you would like to see it, but...
Are they add-ons, new programs?
Some of them are new programs, a lot of them are increases in the maintenance from one year to the next.
IMC did rise for both police and fire, that did have a significant up, you know, in cost. That just, we recently got that invoice last week. We had to wait for that, they were not releasing those numbers. IA Pro and detailed tracking software is new, as well as Cruise Sense for the fire department. So, those three packages are new.
So, is that detail that just tracks how they issue detail, does that include overtime and stuff like that in terms of that software?
It does a laundry list of items. I can actually make sure that you get a copy of what each software package does. It actually, what's happening now is they're doing this manually, and this package will help them perform more features online.
Okay. And then, the, so the server memory upgrades, so that was a reduction, right? So, you got, so I guess you're not looking for...
So, some of that was done last year in 19.
Is that what it is?
But you'll see below that, Counselor, you've got some host upgrades, you've got the yard security cameras that will be new, as well as the increase in the office licenses.
Who's doing our virtual hosting?
We host it here, as well as MTSI.
They do it.
They do it as well.
All right. And just also, if you could check the, same thing with the salary breakdown, if you can just, so there might be a discrepancy on the budget that I was looking at for 19.
Okay.
Just, it's about 2,000, it varies though, so...
Is, and I'm just kind of guessing out loud here, is it the holiday pay that would've been in the prior year budget because it was more than...
Well, some of these...
It was extra days?
Some of these people are contractual, right, salary employees, so would you still have...
Extra days.
I think they still have extra days. I will look for you this evening or first thing tomorrow.
Just in terms like for the MIS Director, it's showing 94,770, and we're starting at 96,916, so... It just seems like when you compare the two budgets, it looks like a $2,000 increase, and then you're adding, obviously, CPI adjustments, which, the cost of living adjustments that we're looking for, so that's...
I will, I will compare them in the morning for you.
I yield.
Thank you. Anything further for Ms. Lewis in the MIS Department? Harry Nunn, thank you very much. Next department, we're gonna enter...
Just one question.
Sure, Counselor.
One, are we gonna be changing at all the situation in which there's only a single receptionist in the downstairs box doing the switchboard? Because our system is not the friendliest system in terms of people getting through to the department they want to get to if the receptionist is not on duty. Bristol Community College, I don't know if you've dealt with their system at all at any time?
They're all automated.
Yeah, it's all automated, so that if you need Kathy Ann Viveras, you say Kathy Ann Viveras, and you get connected to her line. If we're not going to have full-time service in the box downstairs, is there a move toward a more consumer-friendly system so that people can get to whom they want to get to without having the difficulty we have?
I'm sorry, we have, actually have to look into a new phone system within the next couple of years. I did put that on the capital budget because the technology we're using is antiquated and will no longer be supported in several years by Verizon. So, we are looking to, we have one of the projects we are investigating right now and doing research on, is changing the phone systems for City Hall, police and fire. So, we all have the same system, so we are looking into that. But we're looking at probably two to three years down the road.
Okay, so what do we do now in order to respond to consumer needs? What do we, how do we become a more consumer-friendly government center when right now, I believe it's a single person who staffs the phones in the box? And when she's going for vacation, a break, it goes to the automated system, which is awful. So, how's that gonna be addressed?
Unfortunately, the technology that we have, we can't change that unless we change out the phone systems.
How about having a person that goes there when she's not there?
Yeah, if I could interject, Counselor, we have made some operational changes within the department, specifically within the mail delivery, that we feel might be able to free up additional human resources to be able to assist with the coverage in that booth. So, we have initiated that, we're not sure exactly what that impact is going to be, but it's gonna allow some relief to be provided in that area. But, and we could certainly look at doing more of that, but again, it's really only a rotation of one, two, three, four people. So, with veteran employees, you know, that have time off, it becomes more and more challenging to have someone there full-time.
Well, you know, I'm not satisfied with the response. You know, I think that the public that pays its taxes, its water bills, sewer bills deserves to have a consumer-friendly system. In the absence of the electronic system, which is looking like two or three years down the road, I think that we need to make it, an effort to have staffing in that box. Even the elevators, we used to have the listing of offices and on what floors they are. People get into the elevators and they don't know where they're going because that no longer is there unless they check the board on the ground level. Once they get into the elevator, they're lost. I just think that we're not being very consumer-friendly. And I've mentioned this to several people, we have such a wealth of opportunity to be hospitable and be trained appropriately. Maybe this is more human relations, human resources issue than it is an MIS issue. But, you know, between the Catch Center at Bristol Community College, which the H in Catch stands for hospitality, there could be so much training that could be done in terms of hospitality. And also Starwood, which is a major corporate, worldwide corporation, has training programs that deal with training people in hospitality right in our own system, right on President Avenue. And certainly, they could be tapped into as a good training system. So, we're not being very hospitable to our customers, the taxpayers and red payers of the city. So, I ask that that be addressed.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, I yield.
Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
I just have a, kind of, maybe it's an odd question, I'm not sure that it goes to this department, but I see that there's audiovisual, like mobile projectors and things under here. But as far as the microphones and the speaker systems for like the podium when it goes places, does that come out of this department? Or would it come out of, I can't find it anywhere, would it come out of, maybe just because we're not budgeting for it, building, facilities, where would it come out of? I don't see anything in facilities either.
Honestly, Counsel, we haven't really done anything with that in some time. I would think it might be more of a facilities purchase.
I had seen the, some of the equipment in here, you know, with the projector, so I wasn't sure. So, I figured I'd ask while she was here, because I know that the one that we have is, we need a, we need a new one.
It's probably gonna be one of those, it's to be determined, where Ms. Lewis will look at the number, and Mr. Gallagher will look at the number and decide. But, I mean, I consider it as, like in this chamber, I consider this part of your infrastructure. So, again, I think it might fall within the facilities realm.
That's what I saw, I just couldn't find anywhere that...
And you're right, we haven't really addressed it in some time, so...
And I've been at a couple of events that it's been at, and the, one of the veterans, the flag raising on Memorial Day weekend, it just didn't work.
That's the portable one that goes out on location, yeah, that's, we've had that for some time. So, we can certainly look at addressing that. I will too, I will say, going back to an earlier point regarding the ability to navigate the building, again, back in the infrastructure, Mr. Gallagher is in the process of converting and adding a lot more signage that also is not only visually more able to distinguish, but also incorporating Braille. Because we are looking at doing a lot of things with ADA compliance. So, you're gonna start to see additional visual and auditory assist, you know, signage, directional things surrounding, throughout the government center to assist as well. So, it's also acknowledging that the ADA compliance issues need to be addressed as well.
There is some assistive technology equipment in your budget as well, and I was going to ask you, it says accessible furniture?
We purchase monitors, special monitors for someone visually impaired, that staff, if they request it, we purchase... We purchase, um, special devices for their phones for hearing, um, or special screen readers. So if someone has a, an issue, um, you know, who has some type of disability that they come to us with and need assistance, we'll purchase something for them to help them get through, um, their job to make them-
Okay, and nothing was spent out of that in the last year?
We, we have spent some, we've done some through telecommunications, we bought, um, amplifiers for phones, but no one's come to us this year for monitors.
So the employees do know that that's available to them if they have a request?
We reach out, we work with HR and we also reach out with staff if we go to them and they're having some issues. We either, either we note it or they come to us and say, you know, I, I need a, I can't hear on my phone too well. And without asking too many personal questions, we tell them about the different devices that we can purchase or, or help them if they need it. So we do do that as well.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, anything further? Harry Nunn, thank you very much. Next department is gonna be purchasing, which is page one forty-one in our agenda. Pardon? No? Let me get her out of here first. Uh, purchasing, page one forty-one, after that, we're gonna go to the law department, which is page one thirty-seven. So purchasing, page one forty-one. Counselor in seat five, Council Vice President LaBeau.
Oh.
Counselor in seat five.
I have a question. Comparing to last year, there- One sec. As far as the employees go, it looks like there's a change in, we have a purchasing agent, a senior account clerk, and then we have a vacancy for an assistant purchasing agent, where last year, we had a purchasing agent, a senior account clerk and a senior clerk typist. Are we changing the senior, the senior clerk typist is no longer in here and we have a vacancy for an assistant purchasing agent?
Yes, Counselor, so it was, um, several years ago, um, and I don't know, I can't speak specifically prior to that, but there was typically an, an assistant purchasing, um, agent as well as a purchasing agent. And that was someone who, um, would fill in in the absence of the purchasing agent. Last year, we had, we tried operating with two clerks and the purchasing agent. But, um, candidly, I really think, given the volume of activity that goes through that purchasing department, um, and we've, we've seen some instances this year where, you know, we've, we've gotten some, um, very good guidance and assistance in, um, maintaining our procurement, um, activity and, and being compliant with it. I really feel very strongly that we need to, uh, have an assistant purchasing agent's position again. You already have it in ordinance, as I said, it wasn't filled for the past, um, several years. So, but we don't feel that the department needs four individuals. But the plan is to, again, replace, uh, the, one of the clerk's positions and get the assistant purchasing, uh, position filled again. And the expectation is, is that that individual would take the classes and become fully certified as a purchasing agent as well, so that there'd be, uh, no, um, diminishment of service and capacity in the event that the purchasing agent was out, uh, for whatever reason. So, um, that's, that's the intention. You'll see, there's not a huge difference in cost.
No, there's not, so my question is, are there qualifications for an assistant purchasing agent to start the job? I know you said they could take class to fill in, but are there qualifications to get this particular job?
We would, we would have to take another look at the, I haven't looked at the job description, um, in terms of the solicitation that we would be utilizing. At this salary level, I, I'm not sure that we'd get someone who would be fully qualified, um, at that start level. And the expectation was that they, it would be very clearly delineated for them that they needed to begin immediately taking the classes to get them, themselves their certification.
Is that something the city would pay for, those classes?
Yes.
For their certification?
Yes.
Above and beyond their salary?
Yes, yeah, and it would be just for those classes specifically.
And the senior clerk typist, so that not being in here, that job is officially ending at the end of this month?
Yes, at the end of the fiscal year.
Fiscal year?
Yeah.
And then what happens to the person that was in that position?
Uh, that individual has, had been notified, um, and has been looking at other municipal positions and would certainly be able to, you know, apply for those. I think there may be one or two applications pending for that, um, individual. But also, they were also advised that they need to, you know, consider looking outside of government center as well. If, or the school department, I mean, there are other, um, opportunities.
Now, is that person, is that a, a union position?
Yes.
So if you're eliminating the job, they, we don't have to put them elsewhere?
Unless, well, uh, in, in this particular instance, the individual doesn't have much longevity. So, um, if it were in a, a situation where the person had more, I'll say, seniority or, or tenure, then they, there may be an issue of, um, what we might refer to as bumping rights, you know, the ability to displace. But in this particular case-
But there are positions open that they could transfer to?
Right now, there is, there is one opportunity that, um, I believe is in consideration, but I don't wanna speak for the department.
No, I, I don't know these people, I'm just wondering how this, this works.
And that individual was, the individual in question was asked if they had any interest in moving up and getting the certifications. And that wasn't something that the individual was interested in.
So they could, they could have applied for this position if, or-
If there had been an interest in, yeah.
Refusal for that position?
It was, it was, it's been very clear that even with any, and, and even anyone that might bid for the position, I mean, it's very possible that someone within, uh, the municipal system might actually bid for that position when it be, when it gets posted. But again, the, the expectation is very clear that, that the training is gonna be necessary to get the certifications.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeen.
Thank you, I was gonna, I was gonna go to, down the same road, I guess I didn't realize when I was doing my notes that we're going to the assistant purchasing agent versus the clerical. So that clarifies the, uh, salary difference that was, that appeared in last, yes, budget. But, um, just in terms though of, so we're gonna essentially lay this person off?
That would be the ultimate, yeah, that could be a possibility, Counselor, yes, if, if they don't find another position.
So, I mean, I got an issue with the fact that we're adding, you know, hundreds of thousands dollars to departments and then we're laying somebody off. I mean, if somebody's not doing their job, then I think, um, it's not necessarily a layoff, but a termination, that's one thing. But this is eliminating somebody's position to get an assistant. I don't know that I, I support that, I mean, I, I think if you need an assistant purchasing agent, then that, that's fine. But why would we lay off a clerical person?
Well, again, Counselor, we didn't feel the need to have four individuals in the department. But I wanted to be able to achieve that additional certification and have an assistant who was fully certified in purchasing to be able to not only assist with the workload within the department, but also to completely be skilled to fill in in the event of the absence of the purchasing agent. So, um, I, I wasn't comfortable adding another position to achieve that assistant's position. And so we, we simply changed the, um, the title and again, gave that individual the opportunity. But that wasn't something that, um, the individual was interested in. So we, as I said, um, pursuing other options within the municipal circles.
So I, I guess I just, I still have some heartache because under Massachusetts general law, you're not required to have somebody that's certified in procurement, right? I'm not saying that, that's the way to go, um, but it's not a requirement. The only limitation that you would have is that you can't do RFPs, you'd have to do IFBs versus RFPs. So I get that, um, and it's always good to have as many people-
Right.
Certified in that area, they have partial certifications, so you don't have to get truly certified as a, as a purchasing agent. So I think the clerks, it would be good that the clerks just went to the class, even if it's not just a certification, but just to get trained on it. I just don't know, it's, my, my hot burn is laying somebody off. Uh, if you, if you were telling me that we're, we're finding a new position for this individual, then I'm, I guess I'm okay with that. I just, a layoff position when we're adding, uh, to the budget, we've got additional revenues coming in. You know, we're talking about cutting a body, right? And, uh, for one individual, I mean, it's, it's a clerk's position. So I mean, the, the argument could be made that, you know, you could have a grievance filed against you, uh, potentially, if, if the, um, assistant purchasing agent is doing similar work to the clerk typist, um, and longevity. I just, I've got an issue with that personally.
Well, the, the position is effectively being abolished, I mean, it'll still exist in ordinance, but it's not being filled. And again, we're, we're looking at creating the structure within the department to provide the skillsets that we need. And, um, I, I really believe that-
So what I guess what I'm saying is, is there's, there's no other openings for clerical people throughout?
Again, applying, but I can't, I can't represent that the individual necessarily receive one of those positions. So they certainly have the ability to apply, but once again, we need the skills-
What stops you from doing internal posting for a union position?
We could, Counselor.
Right, and so-
In fact, we will probably post this internally to see if we have anyone interested in the assistance purchasing position.
But I'm talking more of the union position, where you've got a, a senior clerk typist. I mean, I'm sure there's, uh, twenty-seven thousand is probably not the highest step that we've got in terms of clerical people. So I can't imagine there'd be a lot of people applying for that type of position. So I'm just trying to figure out why we wouldn't do an internal posting and find this individual a job somewhere that, a department, I mean. Is there any other new positions that are being added from clerical?
No, Counselor, none, none that we can anticipate, no. But, but there is turnover, so that's where the possibility exists.
I guess I'm confused about the possibility. I mean, you're the administration, you control the hiring, so what possibility exists?
Well, all right, so-
It's nice to have the department heads go in, but you know, when you folks come town and wanna add, you know, assistance to assistance to assistance to assistance, and you're telling me that's at the cost of a clerical person that's making twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, it's just, doesn't make sense to me.
Well, Counselor, the, the decision's being made to assure that we have the proper skillsets and the proper coverage at all times for a department that has a very large volume of work that has to be, um, fully compliant. In terms of the individual in question, I would not, um, require a department that has an opening to take an individual if, after interview, they didn't feel that that interview had the, that person had the skills that they were requiring for that position. So it, it may be, um, you know, a, a policy decision, I guess, but again-
So have you done-
The individual is allowed to interview, and if the department head feels that the individual has the skills necessary, then they certainly have every, every opportunity to hire them.
So I would ask, as a senior clerk typist, if the individual doesn't have the skills as a clerk, I would assume that you would have gone through the necessary performance evaluations with her or the individual, done a pro, performance improvement plan, whatever the case may be. I, I mean, a secretary is, a secretary in, whether it's in DBW or, and I know there's different tasks associated with it, but why wouldn't she be qualified as a, a similar clerk typist, uh, if a vacancy opens up somewhere else?
Counselor, our process has always been that the department head is allowed to interview people applying for their respective positions and to make a decision as to whether they think, um, it's to, to select the best person who interviews for the position and hire that individual, so-
And I recognize that, and management at the end of the day has the ultimate say and decisions should be also reviewing that as well, I, I think. It, it's just a philosophical standpoint that, I mean, if we've got individuals who are working with us, have been working with us, how long's this individual been with us?
Not a, a very long time, I'd have to get the exact date, Counselor. But, and, and again, I, I don't want to get into discussing any one individual's personal strengths and weaknesses. I don't think that's our role here, so-
I just recognize that, but it's, I mean, we wanna talk about transparency, I mean, if, if somebody didn't ask the question, we don't know that anybody's getting laid off, right? And that's essentially what's happening, right? So we-
Well, we don't know that, they may get another position, Counselor.
But we don't know that.
And I don't know that.
But as it currently stands, at the end of June thirtieth, somebody's getting laid off because that position no longer exists and the, there's a person in that position. We're not being told that, right? The city council is not taking a vote on something knowing that there is somebody currently in the position of a senior clerk typist currently making twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. And now when I look at this, I don't even see that there is, so if I don't look at this, if I'm, if I'm not comparing the two budgets, I don't know that we just eliminated a position. That's, that's my point. Not only do I not know that we did not eliminate a position, I don't know that we're adding a new position of assistant purchasing agent unless I memorized and I know exactly the positions that are in the purchasing.
Well, Counselor, it's showing us a vacancy. So the fact that it's showing as a vacancy under assistant purchasing agent would imply-
You have an opening or a retirement, or, right, right.
So there is disclosure on, on that element, you're right. It would require you to look at last year's to know that there was a clerk in that position, but we're happy to disclose that for you.
Where, where do I find that disclosure in this document that I have right here?
Again, I just provided it to you, Counselor, we're not-
Because we asked, but if I, if I don't ask, where, where can I go here and see somebody as being laid off?
Counselor, we don't know that the individual's gonna be laid off yet until the individual applies for other positions and is hired or is not hired. If, if you're asking, if you're asking me to tell another department that they must take an individual because they're no longer needed in a department, I am not going to do that.
But you're gonna, you're gonna lay somebody off.
Counselor, if, if that person can't find another position, yes, I am. I feel very strongly, and I've, and I've made this clear on a number of occasions, that I want my department heads to be actively engaged in the selection of their employees. Certainly, if there was a requirement that had to be met, but in this case, I feel the individual is applying for other positions. If there's a good match in terms of expertise and skillset, that position, that person will remain within city government employment. If not, then yes, they could be laid off.
So, so since nobody has been laid off, where do I find in this document that a position has been eliminated?
You don't, Counselor.
Okay, so that answers my point that the transparency isn't there, right? So we can, we can argue semantics, I don't appreciate arguing semantics when you and I both know somebody's being laid off. And then you're gonna tell me, well, I don't know because somebody has not been laid off because it's not June thirtieth yet, right? But to me is, that's, that's the rub and the frustration that we get, right? It's the transparency piece. Nobody on this council would have been any smarter to the fact that we've got departments that are seeing, uh, significant increases, right, and throughout this entire budget and that we have positions being eliminated.
So but for the disclosure, Counselor, you suggesting that we should have kept the individual even though we needed the additional position of assistant purchasing agent?
No, but, but you haven't, you haven't had the conversation with this council to justify why there's a need for an assistant purchasing agent versus a clerical, you haven't, you haven't-
I've just tried to explain that to you, Counselor.
Right, but we wouldn't have gotten any type of description, there's nothing to suggest that that position was being added, that's, that's a new position here, right? Had the question not been asked, we don't know what the reasoning is behind it. We don't know if it's simply because, hey, listen, we want to eliminate this person and we can't fire the individual because internally we haven't done what we're supposed to do from a, a supervisory standpoint to identify what their shortcomings are, make sure that we've gone to every single standpoint to make sure that they're trying to improve in their positions between evaluations, performance improvement plans, things of that nature. So the easy way out is to eliminate a position and add an assistant purchasing agent.
Counselor, that's not, that's not what happened, as I explained and I'll reiterate. In that particular case, the decision has been made to add the assistant purchasing agent to the department. The individual was offered the opportunity to take the classes, to get the certification, to be able to fill that position. Because we fully expect, we're not necessarily gonna have someone walk in that's gonna be fully certified. So we expect there's gonna be that training, that opportunity for improvement, that opportunity to work with an individual. This individual was not interested in that path.
But you just also just told Counselor in, in seat, uh, five, that even if that individual would go, she would have to apply for the position?
No, if she had, if she had been willing to get, so I apologize if there was any misunderstanding. The individual was offered the opportunity to take the classes and get certified to fill that position, and she was not in, inclined to do that.
I've got an issue with it, so that's just me as one counsel. But the other issue I have is, is that we've got an assistant purchasing agent who, which, the position is vacant, but we're also giving a one, one and a half percent increase to, that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, again, we weren't sure what might happen once the contracts negotiated. I think that was added to all of the positions, correct?
But why would you, why-
Years two and three?
But why would you, why would you give a, an increase to a position that's vacant?
Because every year, it's a three-year contract, right? You, you anticipate it for all three years. It's a three-year contract that was negotiated with AFSMI, and so the non-union personnel get the same increases as AFSMI, so-
The assistant purchasing agents under AFSMI?
No, it's a non-union position.
Right, so that's my point, so I'm talking about a non-union position that you just put into the budget for thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, and you're also giving the individual that, we don't know who it is yet, a one and a half percent increase.
No, so that individual, that position, that dollar value for that salary could be increased.
So the, so the Counselor's question is, we have a non-union individual-
Correct.
Who is getting a one point five percent increase without being essentially- Who is getting a one-point-five percent increase without being essentially hired, is that correct?
I, I think, Counselor, what, what we're really saying, and, and honestly, it was, it, the one and a half percent was really put in all of the departments and all of the budgets. But what we're really saying is this person could potentially be hired not to exceed thirty-five thousand, eighteen dollars, based on this budget.
Is that what the ordinance says?
I know the, I believe the ordinance is the thirty-four, five- plus the one and a half percent, because, as you know, we've increased all the positions by the one and a half percent in the ordinance that was just recently passed.
Alright, I yield.
Anything, anything further from this council on purchasing? There was, there was a lot there. Anything further? We're good. Next department is going to be the Law Department, which begins on page one, three, seven. Judge Macy is here. Any questions for law?
Judge, you don't need to come down. He doesn't, he doesn't need to come down.
You don't need to come down, Judge.
You don't need to come down. You're okay. Counselor in seat one?
No, no, that's, that, listen. Whatever, come on down.
Counselor in seat one?
The only question I had was, so everybody else is receiving some type of CPI or cost of living, cost of living adjustment, but the judge isn't? Is there a particular reason? Is, is it because of the one oh five? Is it just the pension requirements, like you can't exceed and earn more?
It's a contract position, Counselor, for negotiated amount.
Which, I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
You don't have a CPI from your line?
No, I, I, I believe in Gary, in Attorney Howieak's contract, there is that clause. But in my contract and Attorney Atlas' contract, it's straight monetary payment.
That's it?
So, there's no escalators.
No yearly adjustments or anything like that?
Excuse me?
No yearly adjustments in your contracts?
No, the only cost differential in Attorney Atlas' contract would be if healthcare went up, because she gets healthcare. But, no, her contract and my contract have no escalators. I believe Attorney Howieak's, which is more traditional, has a CPI, and all three contracts expire December thirty-first.
Remind me never to hire you to negotiate my contract. With that, I yield.
Believe me, Counselor, you don't have to worry.
Counsel, thank you. My only question or information, Attorney Macy, your contract, is it expire at the end of this month? Or is it in the July, your contract?
December thirty-first.
Calendar year.
Of twenty of this year.
December of this year?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to know.
All, all three contracts in my office expire.
Expire December thirty-first, fair enough, thank you very much. Anything further for the Law Department? I just have one quick overview question. Attorney Macy, do you foresee any outside legal going into FY twenty that will exceed your appropriation, that you might have to come before the council? That you're comfortable with speaking about?
No, I, I, but there, there are a couple of caveats. We were able, this year, to live within our budget. When, when you look at the budget item that we all can consider outside counsel, it also includes outside services. So, for example, this year, we had more deposition expenses than we usually do. We also had an eighty-five-hundred-dollar bill for an outside expert we hired on one of the police cases which we settled. There are two serious police cases pending. I expect to hire the same expert for probably both of those. If, if he stays within the budget that I, that he's given us, I'm not going to go over the budget. The only thing that could break the budget on, on outside counsel would be, well, I can't think of one, but if there were an unanticipated federal case. An example where we actually have cut the, the cost, the Four River Revitalization Corporation that sued us in New Jersey, we had to hire a New Jersey counsel. So, of course, we had to pay them. They were successful in getting the case transferred to Massachusetts. So, now, our office will, will take it over. Going forward, I don't anticipate that kind of an unusual case. But if something did occur that way, then, yeah, it might go over my budget. But, right, right now, although the types of cases that come in fluctuate, the, the budget I've had, although like everybody else, I, I, I've been able to live with.
Okay. Counselors, anything? Very good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Addresses all department heads who are here, waiting in the audience, am I correct? Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi, very good.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Let's go to revenue, please. And I think it's an appropriate time. Mrs. Sahadi, Mrs. Viveras, you want to just give us an overview on, on revenue projections going into this fiscal year? I believe this revenue projections will begin on page seventy-seven, is that correct? Madam City Administrator, Sahadi?
President, can we just, I know we have a couple meetings scheduled, so it's, I mean, it's getting nine-thirty. Can we just, I guess, wrap up the other departments that might be in?
I'm fine with that.
I mean, I, I've got, I've got a lot of questions on revenue, and I think it's just gonna-
Alright, so what we'll do, I think what we should do tonight then is we'll, we'll finish off Administrative Services, which is City Administration. That's the only other department left at Administrative Services. Tomorrow evening, we will begin with revenue. In addition to that, if that's fair, I would like to see if we could, you know, speak of the mayor's office as well tonight, if we can get that out of the way. Mayor's Office, City Clerk, and City Council is here as well. So, I'd really like to establish general government and administrative services. Tonight, if we can conclude that, that'd be great, and then tomorrow, we'll begin with revenue. So, at this point, Mrs. Viveras, let's stick to with Administrative Services, which is your department. Page, begins on page one sixteen. If you can give us an overview?
Certainly, Mr. President, they're really members of the council. There really isn't much of a change at all in this budget this year. In pre, prior year, I had an expense for charter review. That's been completed, so that's no longer an option. We do have, last year, I had, under other personal services, that was actually an anticipated creation of a tourism director. That position was not approved in ordinance, so that's no longer in this year's budget. In otherwise, it's relatively consistent. There are no additional changes to note.
Any questions for City Administrator?
We do currently have, in the interest of disclosure, the grant writer has in fact left the city's employment to take another position, and we are in the process of interviewing for a replacement.
Mrs. Viveras, if you may, that position has seemed to, had a hard time filling initially when the position was vacated by the prior individual, and this one hasn't lasted all that long. Are you foreseeing any issues from the administrator's standpoint that will contribute to this unique position?
I don't believe so, Mr. President. We, we actually have a number of people who have applied for the position already. We've just recently posted it, so we are going to be conducting the interviews. I will say that, credit to our department heads and personnel, many of them have been actively involved in the grant applications within their respective departments, and they are quite comfortable, you know, filling that gap in the interim. And so, they are, you know, working with us to make sure that we don't have any lost opportunities. And again, the grant writer always got the department personnel involved in the supporting information and the technical aspects of the grant applications. So, the departments have been very willing and inclined to assist us in picking up some additional services within those areas. But, we are optimistic, given the applicants that we're planning to interview, that we may very well have that position filled in the short term.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions for City Administrator? Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kilby.
Is this position still split with the school department?
Yes, Counselor, yes.
That's it?
Thank you.
So, obviously, they're going to have a say in terms of who's hired, or is it strictly in your purview?
They don't usually, Counselor, so long as we hire someone that has the appropriate skills. I have spoken to the department, the school department, on a number of occasions, just to make sure that they're comfortable with the individual, that we're providing the services that they expect, and it's always been very positive, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, anything further? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lekadeen.
Just to get on the salaries, this one was thirty-one-hundred dollars off, just for the administrator. And then, there's a CPI, so I just, again, just want to double check that.
I, I will look at all of them. Like, the only thing I can think of is the, last year, there was two days, I believe, of holiday pay that was added.
But that was last year, though, right?
Yeah, so, are you saying it's-
Higher, so it's, so it would have been one, one hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine at the end of last year? And then, unless you missed the holiday pays in the budget?
I don't know. Let me, let me do that tomorrow morning, and I'll have that, because I think that's going to be consistent in this entire document, since every department you've looked at so far, you've noted that. So, let me check in the morning, and I will have that answer for you tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, anything further?
None.
Hearing none, thank you very much. On City Administration, that would conclude Administrative Services. With no further questions for Administrative Services, we'll go to the first tab for general, general government. Would be the, since we've already addressed veterans, we've already addressed elections, the mayor's office. Mayor's Office begins on page ninety in our budget book, ninety-one, to be exact. And Mrs. Viveras, if there's anything specific that you can contribute in terms of an overview for this budget in this department, that'd be great. Anything that you've seen change?
The only thing, Council President, that I'd like to add is that in the prior year, the U.S. Conference of Mayors was misclassified as travel slash mileage slash expenses, when in fact, it was the dues for that organization. So, you'll notice that travel slash mileage slash expenses have decreased, but yet dues and memberships have increased.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lekadeen.
Thank you. So, so you're saying the sixty-five-hundred should have been in the fourteen-five?
It's actually fifty-three-hundred was the amount of the dues, but that's correct, Counselor.
So, then it, that's why it ties up, okay. Chief of Staff, so this may be the same thing that we, we had before, but that position's currently vacant, right?
That's correct.
So, the twelve-hundred-dollar increase to the position?
Again, Counselor, I believe the payroll department, when we gave them the charge of, of putting the payroll together, they added the one and a half percent to all of the positions.
Not really looking at vacancies?
Not looking at vacancies, that's correct.
And then, just for the portion below there, it says, information only. So, Monica Souf is on there as a special project media. So, she's receiving forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars from the mayor's office, that plus CDA MOU payment?
Um, yes.
Fifteen thousand, so what?
That's the storefront program. It's not to exceed the fifteen thousand, it depends on the amount of work that she puts into the program, and then it's reimbursed through the MOU into the city's budget. So, in the prior year-
What's the MOU stand for? Is it, is it a true memorandum of understanding, or is it, is MOU something else?
Yes, there is an agreement.
Oh, is that, okay, so there is an agreement, okay.
So, in the prior year, we called it-
An MOU with CDA?
Correct, right.
I just wasn't sure if that was just a different acronym for something in CDA?
And in the prior year, if you noticed in the FY nineteen, we actually called it a stipend, and we know we're trying to stay away from stipends. So, we reflected it differently in the current year, but it still exists.
Okay, so the total salary for that individual could potentially be up to sixty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars?
That's correct.
I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, in seat five, Counselor Vice President LaBeau.
On the stipends, the five thousand dollars that was set for the mayor's secretary, because there is no chief of staff, so I see it's not in twenty-twenty, does that have an end date to it?
It was a one-time payment.
For how, how long?
I guess for the timeframe from when she started till June thirtieth.
So, what happens on July first if we still don't have a chief of staff?
Again, Counselor, we would have to, we would have to look at that. As you know, the stipend has to be financed within the mayor's budget, so it's conceivable if there's a chief of staff ready and on board on July first, that there would be no available funds to issue any stipends, because the salary line would be fully accounted for.
I'm not in disagreement with this particular stipend because of, of the reasoning for it. I just, did this person know the end date was June thirtieth?
Yes.
When did it start?
It was a one-time payment.
Right, but it obviously is covering a period of time.
I believe she got it just prior to March thirty-first, which is why it's showing up on the quarterly report for March.
But, but she had been providing the services prior to that point, so people were, yes, people-
When did she start doing that?
The chief of staff's been gone since January first, so, I mean, between that individual and the other individual, the mayor's administrative assistant, you know, they were picking up the tasks for the six-month period.
So, we'll reassess on July first for this person?
Again, that will be the mayor's decision as to whether to fill that position, and we won't know if there's going to be even funding available for additional stipends until we know what's happening with that position.
Okay, and then my other question about the difference in the travel and the dues and membership, was answered already? We're just doing the mayor's tab right now?
At this point, yeah.
I yield, thank you.
Mrs. Viveras, just in terms of full transparency, does the mayor indicated to you that he's going to be hiring a chief of staff on July one?
Candidly, Mr. President, I haven't asked him.
Okay, thank you for your honesty, appreciate that. Anything further on this mayor, oh, Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kilby, I'm sorry.
One quick question here, I don't mean to nitpick, however, twenty thousand, four hundred dollars for dues and memberships, that's a lot of money, so I'm just, it was transferred from last time from travel, Mary, you said?
Well, mass municipal, mass-
Why is it that high?
Mass municipal annual dues is fifteen thousand, one hundred for a city this size. And then, the U.S. Conference is the difference, the fifty-three-hundred.
Answer my question, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the mayor's office? Hearing none. City Clerk's office, City Clerk, which would be on page-
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five. Madam Clerk, any overview for us while you're here? Anything further?
Not really much to highlight, no big changes. We just added a small amount of a thousand dollars in our office equipment, hoping to purchase an ID maker for constables, taxi drivers, and all of the IDs that we currently make for the city.
Thank you. Anything for our clerk? Hearing none, very good. City Council.
The only thing here, Council President and members of the council, that I'd like to add is that the outside audit has been moved to your department with regard to the charter change, and with your direction, I have solicited quotes from other accounting firms to see if we can bring the cost of the outside audit down a little bit.
Thank you very much. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lekadeen.
So, I was going to ask that question, and then during the school department discussions, I decided I was going to pick up the charter and try to find where the mayor has to sign off on their contracts, but I did run into that. So, it just says that we have to fund or provide for. So, you, you think this funding makes the most appropriate sense here?
I, the way I understood and read-
Just looks strange to have it under the city council.
I completely agree, I completely agree.
More of a financial expense.
I completely agree, but as I read it and we talked about it, it sounded like it needed to come from your department at this point, so-
Because we appropriate, I just-
Right.
I look at it as the broad sense of, city council shall appropriate monies, whether it's, whatever line it is. I was just going to ask why it was there, but that, that answers the question. The other thing, Mr. President, that I've always been advocating for since I've been here is our own legal counsel. So, I'm still going to make that, that pitch here. I don't see any money for legal services that have been provided, so I think we should have at least, you know, maybe ten thousand dollars, so if we want to do get a second opinion on something. You know, I, I think a, a good point could be the, and we, and we worked it out amicably, but you go back to the marijuana license- You know, I think a good point could be the, and we worked it out amicably, but you go back to the marijuana licenses, I mean, we were told that it would have to go to a ballot, and, you know, we were just in disagreement with that, and I think that's just one thing that comes to mind, that, you know, I think the city council had a different opinion than Corporation Council, but obviously we were, through discussion, we were able to work that out, but I think that would be something, that would make sense for the council to get a second opinion from council to say, this is what Corporation Council is stating, what's your take on that? Understanding that obviously council can't, our council would not be able to bind the city for anything from a legal standpoint, but it would give us at least some type of documentation to say, this is why we think the council is, you know, has a different opinion, and that opinion may be right, or better, I don't know which adjective you want to use, but, so, just a different opinion, but I think it's important, I think we're a legislative body, and sometimes, from an administrative standpoint, it's tough to be Corporation Council when, you know, you're dealing with the entire city and you're appointed by the mayor. Not saying that that's taking place, but it's something that goes on, so I think it would make sense if we had ten thousand dollars in this account for purposes like that.
And I appreciate those comments, Counselor. I will say that there's been one incident, one circumstance since I've been council president that we've had to get an opinion, or almost get an opinion from an outside council, was when the city council was served with paperwork before our vote with respect to removal or non-removal of a mayor. There was an incident that did occur, I did work that out with Corporation Council, we did have a discussion with Colpman and Page, which is an outside legal firm that we were going to possibly retain should we end up in litigation, but it didn't go in that direction. Corporation Council did indicate to me at that time that resources were available to this council, should we need it specifically for that, so for some reason we have that situation occur again. You know, Corporation Council was cognizant of the council's opinion, didn't want to step on that, so, but I do understand and respect your position, I've advocated for that in the past.
So I recognize that, and I guess my only point is, is it all depends on who Corporation Council is, right, so if it's in their budget, they don't have to set aside resources for us, right? So if it's in our budget, we would have the authority regardless of whatever, whoever the Corporation Council may be, if they're telling us, no, we can't use legal, outside legal, because I've already given you my opinion, and I think my opinion is a legitimate opinion, right? So at that point, what do we do? Right, I mean, and not that we can do anything with the opinion that we receive, but at least we have a documentation and a second opinion on what's before us so that we can make educated decisions moving forward, you know.
Mrs. Viveras, Mrs. Sahadi, is there any excess money in the budget that we would be able to have a line item for outside legal at the request of Counselor in seat one?
Well, it's my understanding, based on the few auditing firms that I've already spoken to, I mean, we won't get their quotes until next Monday, but I'm expecting them to come in lower than the one-sixty, so you will actually have it in your expense line item if you pass this budget as it's currently presented.
Fair enough. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
I have that, same one I thought, before I get to that, I know that you said this was a charter change, Mrs. Sahadi, where was this audit previously?
In the auditors department.
And that, I have the charter in my desk, but it was a charter change to put it under the city council?
Yes.
I have it in my desk, I'll pull it up.
Actually, Counsel, so the city council is selecting the auditing firm.
That is correct. That is correct.
Which is a market change from what was previously in place.
Okay, I will read that part of the charter, and then this council had voted favorably, I believe it was twenty thousand for legal representation, or to be able to ask for a second opinion, or a legal question on anything that was in front of us, so I'm just wondering why it wasn't put in here, based on the vote that we took.
It wasn't presented to us with the budget that came down from, actually technically from the city clerk, but from your, assuming your body, through the city clerk, to the finance department for preparation of this budget.
Motion to reargue, just kidding.
And if this audit, I know you said you won't have the quotes yet, but if there isn't the money in there, then we're just out of luck, as far as getting the twenty thousand put in this budget?
You cannot increase the budget, you can only decrease it, so you would have to come through the mayor for an appropriation change, like any other department.
Okay, I voted in favor of that twice, it was, it's been before me as a counselor twice, and I voted in favor of it twice, for the reasons that both council president and Counselor in seat one gave, among others, there are times when you just want a second opinion, depending on the dynamics, on what's in front of you, the time that we were served at a council meeting by attorneys from our own mayor. Nothing against the judge, I've always asked him questions, but when a Corporation Council is hired and fired by whoever is mayor, it, sometimes you think otherwise on what their opinion might be. So I would like to see it in this budget, I have voted for it twice, and I'm not happy that it's not in here, so we'll see what we can do about that as we go, but I'm not okay with just hoping that there's extra money left in the audit, that I yield.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, sure, Counselor in seat two?
I'm guessing it was by virtue of a resolution, I don't know that the council didn't vote, cannot vote for funding.
Madam Clerk, we're for tomorrow, if you could get us that specific resolution that was, I mean, did it go through ordinance, did it pass through? So it was more of a resolution that was filed, I'm sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head, there was a resolution that was filed, that the city, you know, before we get this any more complicated, we'll have the clerk get us a copy of that resolution and what it entailed, and we can get that by tomorrow. You yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Well, this relates to Corporation Council, I've always been one that felt that we are a single corporation incorporated as the city of Fall River, and to have more than one legal counsel for the corporation, I think is counterproductive to being a good corporation. On the bright side, however, I'll give you a little sneak preview of the deliberation after several meetings, I think five or six meetings, in fact, we've had of the Fall River Task Force, that in doing research on city manager forms of government, we found, among other things, that in Cambridge, which is really the community that we're looking at most closely, it is the city council that hires the city manager, of course, but they also hire the city auditor, and they also hire the city clerk. The recommendation that was just recently made at the most recent task force meeting is that we add that the city council hire the Corporation Council. So this is not yet ready for distribution, it's not ready for submission to the council, but I think the council may have some pleasure in understanding that the possibility of an amendment to the charter that would establish a city manager form of government would give to the council the responsibility, not only to hire the city manager, but also to hire the city auditor, the city clerk, and the city's Corporation Council. Interestingly, at one time, within my service in the community, it was the city council that did hire the city clerk at one time, in fact, I think it may have even been the president of the city council that hired the city clerk, back in the day of Joe Doran. That changed through the years, but I think that, again, looking at a more efficient and more responsive city government, that the, giving the authority and the power to the council to hire key department heads, and again, the four that I delineated, city manager, city clerk, city auditor, and Corporation Council, will provide for at least some of what this council has argued for through the years, to have legal counsel be responsive to the council. And just one other question, because the other thing that is of concern to me is the rather meager pay that we give to our elected officials, particularly school committees, city councilors, and mayor, and I know that my colleague in seat two thought that maybe we should have a sentiment of the council as to whether or not we'd like to see this addressed. Interestingly, we did review, and I corrected Mrs. Sahadi, that she, when she said that there would need to be a change in the charter in order to do that, well, in fact, we did review the charter during the break, and we found that the council has the authority to rescind the freeze, but it has to be done within the first eighteen months, and some would think that this has been orchestrated, but clearly it wasn't, because none of us had realized what the timeframe was, but within eighteen months of our term of office, which is through June thirtieth, we could rescind that freeze. It would mean now that the city administration would have to submit to us for our Thursday meeting, an order to rescind. So I'm willing to make a motion to have us request that the administration do that, so that we can address this inequality, if the president so ruled that that motion would be in order. So basically, the motion would be that we ask the city administration to forward to us on Thursday a rescinding of the freeze that occurred, we think in 2010, and that we institute a CPI that would adjust the salaries accordingly, so it's not an increase in salary, it's just an adjustment based upon what it used to be based upon, which was the Consumer Price Index, which I think is about one and a half percent, which is consistent with the percentages that we've been giving through negotiated settlements, so that motion is made, Mr. Clerk?
Motion has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, which I allow to request that the city administration prepare an order to the city council rescinding the freeze on the cost of living increase to all elected officials, that has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, is there a second? Seceded by council, a long discussion on the motion to send a letter to the administration, asking them to prepare an order in preparation of Thursday's agenda, anything further? Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
I just have a question or a point of information to add to what Counselor in seat three has said, it has to be adopted in the first eighteen months, which this would be the last month, but it would not take effect until after the next election, so it would be for the next body of school committee, or city council, or mayor, whoever that might be, although I looked it up for school committee and council, but did you have, did you look it up for mayor as well, was that it here?
It would be all elected officials.
That's for all, if I may be responsive to the question.
Sure, Counselor in seat three, sure.
Yeah, and I think that point is well taken, that we are not, if we vote yes, this is not for us, this is for a future council. So just to emphasize, we're not giving ourselves a cost of living increase, it's a cost of living increase that would go into effect upon the election of a new council.
Thank you. You still have the floor, Counselor Vice President?
And I think there was some direction as to ask the superintendent what other school committees are making, is that, was that correct? Are they going to, do we have a time when they were, when he was giving that back to us?
Counselor, if I might, I think you're looking at a CPI, really.
Yeah, the cost of living adjustment is an increase of one point five percent.
If I could just get a...
Counselor in seat one?
Point of information, is Counselor in seat three looking just for unfreezing the cost of living adjustments, which would be through the CPI? Because that's different than making a salary adjustment to the school committee that would then require going to the state and figuring out what other school committees make, and then I would also suggest that it was probably 2011 that that freeze was done, it may be 2010, but I think it was 2011. But I'll let you know that the school committee at least goes back to 2005 before, they were at seventy-two hundred when I first got elected in '05, and I think it may go back before then, so the question then just becomes is, when do we go for the CPI adjustments for the school committee, how far back? Because, again, they weren't on the same adjustments like the city council was, so.
So to, for your point of information, your clarity, Counselor in seat three, can you clarify that your motion, how I understand it, is for a cost of living CPI increase of one point five percent, which is usually across the board, is that what you're...
Yes, and it would go back to when the freeze was voted on by this council.
It would go back to when...
Whatever that year is.
Whatever the year is, okay, which the clerk can confirm.
It's either fiscal year 2010 or 2011.
No, it was prior to that, Steve Walsh was still in the council.
Counselor in seat three? Let's solve.
The Flanagan.
Counselor in seat three, please?
Yeah, whatever it is, the clerk can confirm when that vote occurred, and again, to emphasize, it's not for this council, it's for future, it's not for this school committee, it's not for the mayor. As to the question that I asked the superintendent, that really is irrelevant to this motion, that's just a curiosity as to where we stand with other communities, I know as far as the council is concerned, we are significantly lower than those communities that I'm familiar with, New Bedford as an example, Lowell, Cambridge certainly is beyond anything that Fall River would ever consider, but there are, there are very few communities of our size, if there are any, that are as low as we are. So I think we owe it to our community, and I think all of us know the work that this council, and every council, in my lifetime, has done, and it's a fair thing, and I am concerned, just from a academic point of view, and how few people are willing to participate in government, and I don't think that this is going to be a decisive factor in increasing that number, but it's been, you know, again, when I first ran, there were thirty-plus council candidates, this year I think we're approaching sixteen or seventeen right now, so, you know, I think this is one way to say to those that might be considering that, yes, this is something worthy of your consideration, without I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, you still have the floor.
So I was, so we...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So this is just for the CPI and not for what other communities are paying, in this case, the school committee?
That's how I understand the motion before us right now.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that before, thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Long?
I'd be willing to support this from today going forward, but I don't think we should go retroactive back on CPI. I think CPI would be fine going forward, but why would we give a cost of living increase to a council that's coming in in January, they, there was no cost of, they're going to get a benefit that they didn't work for, just, if we're saying that the new council is a new council, is what I'm saying. So if, just because you got elected back then, you're going to get some, somebody got elected in their first term's going to get ten years of CPI, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I'd be willing to support CPI going forward, if we want to talk about, or have discussions about the amount of money a city councilor makes, and talk about maybe giving us an increase in the next year's budget, I'd be more than willing to have that conversation, but as far as the CPI, I can support it going forward, but I can't do no retroactive CPI, so that's where I stand on it, so depending on how the vote goes, if we're talking about a retroactive CPI, I'm voting no, if we're talking about a CPI here going forward, I'd vote in favor of that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lekadeen.
Thank you, I'm going to support this motion going forward, but I think there's a difference between a CPI and an adjustment, and I think Counselor in seat three is really looking for an adjustment to, at least for city council and school committee, but the reason I'm going to support this is more for the mayor's position, I think it's, when we look at the challenges we have to get people to run for the office of mayor, the position of mayor, that position pays a hundred and eighteen thousand, right, not to take anything away, but the town administrator is making close to twenty-five thousand dollars more than the mayor, right? And I get the administrator, the town administrator does more of the day-to-day functions with the departments, but when we start looking at the complexity of the city and the amount, I mean, we're talking about a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar budget, or whatever we're talking about, I mean, you know, you start looking at CEOs that are in charge of those types of budgets, you're talking about millions of dollars, you're not going to get anybody with any type of business background, anybody that has some real credentials to want to come in, take the aggravation, take the twenty-four-seven job requirements that's associated with it at a salary of a hundred and eighteen thousand, I just think the position itself is not competitive with the private sector, and we're trying to sell the city as a private sector entity, essentially, to get somebody in that type of leadership magnitude, and when we start looking at, you know, the, just the town administrator's salary, I think that's significantly underpaid, you just go look at some smaller towns in that, you know, that one-forty-five range is for very, very small communities, right? And I know when we start talking about Fall River, we're looking at the average salary and stuff like that, but when we start talking about town managers, I mean, you know, nobody wants to go quote Cambridge, Cambridge is paying two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for a town manager, that's just, you know, outside of our range, but there are town administrators that are getting close to two-hundred-thousand dollars now for smaller communities, so if you're going to try to... close to $200,000 now for smaller communities, so if you're going to try to bring in, if we're talking even of going into a town manager form of government, we're going to have to increase that, I mean, we're just not going to find competitive people with the qualifications or the credentials to come in with the salary, so I'd definitely be supporting it, not necessarily for the city council or the school committee, because I think we do this because we want to make sure that we have good government, provide the oversight, I mean, it's an added benefit, we won't deny that, but I don't know that we need to significantly increase these salaries, but I think we can't ignore the salary of the mayor position, and again, we've got to take the individual that's currently in that position out of it and just look at, from the city standpoint, what the CEO of a city of our size should be paid, that's just my standpoint.
You yield, thank you, Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Yeah, I did a quick calculation, just so we know what we're talking about here, a quick calculation on the 1.2% over a 10-year period amounts to about $83 a month, excuse me, yeah, $83 a month, so, you know, it's not a significant amount of money, obviously, but frankly, if this fails, I think I should let this motion go, get passed, or get defeated, but in fact, if the council isn't inclined to want to make this retroactive to when the freeze occurred, and I think that that's appropriate, but if the council chooses to reject this first motion, I would be prepared to make a motion that makes it effective next year.
You yield?
Yeah, I yield.
Anything further? Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Well, I would have to agree that the mayor's job certainly should be more than 118, that's for sure, but to say that we're going to go back for 10 years, it just, to me, doesn't make any sense, we all took a cut if we were on board, and I think it's a slap in the face to the people of Fall River to say, hey, we're going to take it back from 10 years, so that's the way I feel, I won't support that. I yield.
Thank you, anything further? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you reiterate the motion before us, so we can vote?
The motion was to send a letter to the administration requesting that they prepare an order rescinding the cost of living freeze for elected officials.
Retroactive.
Retroactive, too.
I will amend my motion to make it effective with the next fiscal year.
With the next fiscal year?
Not retroactive.
Not retroactive.
Not retroactive. That's, you're going to amend your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second, anything further on the amendment? Clarify the motion before us, Madam Clerk, one more time.
To send a letter to the administration requesting that they prepare an order rescinding the cost of living freeze for elected officials effective next fiscal year.
Motion has been made and seconded, roll call.
It's only that the amendment passes, but we're going to vote on the amendment first.
Right, we're going to vote on the amendment right now, yes. The amendment has been made and seconded, on the amendment only, roll call.
Is there an amendment? I thought he just pulled it.
No, I amended my original motion so that it's not retroactive, that takes effect next year. I can pull the original motion.
Why don't you do that and make it a little clearer?
Pull the original motion and make the second motion as.
Motion has been withdrawn by Counselor Stephen Kamara, your new motion, please.
My new motion is, as was just read by the clerk, that the freeze, the request of the mayor, that he submit an order to rescind the freeze and institute a CPI effective fiscal year 20.
Motion has been made and seconded by Counselor, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Long, discussion, Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
We're currently on, about to pass fiscal year 20, so it wouldn't be until the next council or school committee or mayor was elected, it wouldn't take place until January, correct?
Correct, that is correct. Madam City Administrator, you have a question?
No, we're good.
No, I'm all set, thank you, Mr. President.
Anything further? Motion has been made and seconded, roll call.
On the motion, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
No.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Paula B. LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
No.
Vaveras?
Yes.
President Ponte?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion.
Motion carries. All right, anything further from the city council's department? Counselor in seat seven, six, Counselor Long.
I just, I'm a big fan of stipends, but when I look at this, there's one person that's not receiving a stipend, is there a reason for that?
In the city council's department?
Correct.
All right, so just so the council is aware, it was my recommendation to send to the city administration that the city council clerk, one of the city council clerks be increased to be equal to other clerks for $40,000. Now, since it is my understanding that the proposed salary change to $40,000 is still in ordinance to pass through its proper readings, there's a $3,765 projection in, on page 99 of your budget, that has been set aside for other personal service, that will get her up to her equal amount, that we're trying to get her up to.
That's correct.
Yeah, but I'm saying there's, I don't want to mention names, but there's only one person within the clerk's office, the assistant clerk, receives nothing, at least that's what it looks like to me.
Counsel, the stipends that you see under the city council?
Page 100.
Are for the positions of city council clerk of committees, city council assistant clerk of committees, and clerk of council, those are those three stipends.
Sure.
The assistant city clerk received the stipend previously because she served as assistant clerk of committees, she has resigned that position, and it has been taken over by the city council clerk.
Which is a new hire this fiscal year, because we didn't have that hire.
I just noticed it, that's all, I just wanted to try to be fair, that's all.
No problem. Thank you, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
Just to get back out on the auditing firm, did you say the city council's going to choose, or the council president's going to choose the auditing firm?
That's the way I would understand the new charter.
Can we just get a legal opinion on that, and the only reason I say that is, I get the funding if we want to keep the funding here, I just don't know, I know that it doesn't make sense for the city council to pick who the outside auditing firm is, since we will not have any interaction whatsoever with the auditing firm, you know, the finance department's the one that's really dealing with the outside auditor, so you folks would know better than we would, if they're being responsive to our requests or communications that we've had, I think that's, obviously, as you know, is an important part of getting.
I certainly don't disagree with you.
Financial audits done and stuff like that, so I mean, if you've got issues and you've got a city council who's not willing to work with the administration, then, you know, you could potentially be stuck with an outside auditing firm that's not working with the finance department.
Well, we can certainly look at the quotes and make a recommendation, and if you want to take a look at them as well, I mean, we can ask, we can ask.
I've got conversations all over the place.
I'm sorry, if we can limit the conversations on the council, please?
We can ask Judge Macy for his opinion as well, if that is something you'd like.
I don't mind taking on things that I think are within the jurisdiction of the city council, I just don't think outside legal is within or should be within the jurisdiction of the city council, I understand potentially for a transparency standpoint, but we're hiring an outside auditor who's required to have an independent view on the books anyways, but again, as I stated, that we have no interaction whatsoever, we're not setting up any of the trial balances or sending out any of the documentation that they're requesting, and if you're looking to get questions answered, so you can get things to them in a timely manner, and they're not responding, I mean, we wouldn't know any of that, so. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, anything further for the city council's department? Hearing none, that will conclude tonight, we will begin, Counselor in seat three?
Just one quick addition, being the advocate for us and future councilors, I hope that someday we'll also see included in this budget, an opportunity for this council to be reimbursed for expenses to conventions, particularly MMA and National League of City events, those are our advocacy groups, very important for us to be advocates at those organizations. This is not going to happen this year, but I hope it happens in the future.
Thank you, Counselor in seat two.
Start with the 1.5, then you want to get reimbursed for travel, pretty soon we're going to want stipends to come to these meetings, when does it end? I think, that's why I voted against it, it's more than a fair salary for what we're making, what we're doing, I think, you know, it just opens up Pandora's box into all the other things we can be wanting for this council, but like I said earlier, people do this job because they want to do this job, want to be the best for the city, they shouldn't do it for the money. With that, I yield.
Thank you, anything further from this council, Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President LaBeau?
I just had a question on elections, I didn't want to make first day, prior years, did we have more, we have a head clerk, we have our elections department head, and then we have a part-time senior aide, in prior years, did we have an additional either part-time or full-time employee in that department? It's always been two and a half?
The staffing's been at that level for some time, Counsel, I can't say going way back, but that's been more recently, the staffing pattern.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so tomorrow, we're going to start our meeting, I believe it starts at 6:00 PM, Madam Clerk, tomorrow, we'll begin our meeting with revenue, if we can, or, revenue will be included in our agenda tomorrow, I would like to probably do the same thing that we did today, actually first, and get our department heads out of here first tomorrow, so we won't do revenue first, we will try to get our department heads out, and then tomorrow, we're going to be doing financial services, facilities maintenance, community maintenance, and community services, and revenue tomorrow, we've been able to establish and take care of schools, administrative services, and general government, and if there's any carryover to Thursday, it is the hope, hopefully, that we can make a decision and vote on this budget by Thursday.
Can I just ask through you if we can have the clerk just email us what we're doing again?
Absolutely, we'll reiterate that again tomorrow, we don't need a motion to adjourn, we can just recess, or should we adjourn? I'm sorry, Mrs. Sahadi?
I'm just confirming that the city treasurer, city collector, and assessor are all at a conference.
Yes.
So if you don't need them, I can answer their questions, and as for the city auditor, she asked whether or not you were going to need her presence.
Anybody? Hearing none, there's nothing.
As long as you folks can answer the finance questions, I'm good with that, we don't.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor. Motion to adjourn tomorrow is a separate meeting. Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, the ice, have it, good night.